Good evening, welcome to the Selectman's meeting in Goffstown, May 2nd, 2011. First order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. Steve, would you please lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next item is the acceptance or correction of minutes of 4:18 on public minutes.
Motion to accept.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Next item is announcements. And Sue, do we have any announcements?
No, I don't.
No? Any other announcements? No? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next item, which is public comment. We're running a few minutes early, so there might be somebody that comes later. If there's any member of the public who'd like to make a comment, you're free to come up. And Lowell, we're gonna need your name for the record.
As he addresses you. I know you well.
Lowell Montrou. Friends of the Goffstown Rail Trail. All right, I understand that later this evening you'll be discussing the selection of a firm for the engineering and design phase of the rail trail TE grant project. One of the first large issues that must be addressed for this project is the basic treatment of the Mast and Henry Bridge Road crossings. As Mast Road is a state highway, the New Hampshire DOT will have final say on the design of those two crossings. There've been differing opinions within the DOT on how to handle bike and pedestrian crossings of busy roads. Some there seem to prefer that there be no crossings of state roads for anything. They resist any approach to crossings that would have even minimal impact on motorized vehicular traffic at the increased risk to trail user's safety. Others, they are more reasonable in accommodating non-motorized uses and these crossings. During this project, we should be looking for a design that is safe for both trail and road users. More than just a couple of signs will be required. The specific trail crossing locations must be marked so that trail knows or trail users know where to cross and road users know exactly where to expect trail users to show up. In addition, some kind of activated light should be present. The crossing locations aren't where road users would normally expect people to be crossing the road, such as in the village context, so there needs to be a more obvious indication. These could be the more traditional push-button activated crossing lights, or they could be relatively new automatically triggered device called a rectangular rapid flashing beacon. In fact, just last summer, William Lambert of the DOT had suggested that for crossings such as ours should include, you know, such an activated warning device and specifically recommended the RRFP. So, in conclusion, I urge you to direct the new engineering firm to prefer, to pursue safer crossing designs with the DOT, you know, even though there may be some resistance there. A good design will greatly reduce dangers for all and do it with impacts to drivers that range from minor to trivial. The increased danger level caused by not doing so can significantly stifle the development and use of the Goffstown Rail Trail. That's my comment.
Thank you very much, Lowell, for your comment.
Lowell, would you be willing to provide those comments to me?
Sure.
We do have three emails received on that same subject. I didn't know if you want to take it up now or when we get to that subject, Carl.
We'll do it when we get to that subject.
Okay.
Is there any other member of the public that would like to make a comment? While we're in public comment? Ray, we're gonna need your name for the record.
Ray Tabor. Agent West, Union.
Goffstown.
Member of the rail trail. Sorry I'm late. I don't know what Lowell said, but I think it would be very important to have some type of a crosswalk designation. Was that what he was talking about?
Mm-hmm.
I've noticed around the area, if they wouldn't do a crosswalk, there are places where there are rumble strips that will let drivers know that something significant is coming. I would like to see a crosswalk painted, but I don't know what department is gonna decide.
Okay. Thank you very much, Ray.
Okay.
Any other comments? Seeing none, we'll move on at this point. Uh, hang on a minute. No, okay, these are specific to the rail, so we'll just hold on to that one, I apologize. Next item is gonna be the Public Works Director. Call query regarding road posting policy.
The road posting policy, as you know, a couple of weeks ago, I put that before you. And I just wanted to make sure we didn't let it fall through the cracks, so I came tonight to kinda just check with the board, make sure there's no additional comments, figure out where we go from here. I'm assuming you're gonna wanna have a public hearing, so I would just ask the board if there's nothing that prevents us from moving in that direction. That we go ahead and get that scheduled. So it's really all I'm here for is to see what the board...
And I assume that this is gonna be, this is for next season?
Yes.
Okay, Nick, you have a question?
Question for Sue. Does this, does a policy require a public hearing, or would that be for just the benefit of providing the public with information?
Just for benefit of the public, yeah. Not legally required to have a public hearing for policy, just ordinances and like others.
I'll make a motion that we go forward with a public comment or a public hearing.
Could you say...
I'll go forward with, I'll make a motion to go forward with this policy as written to a public hearing.
I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
So we're gonna leave it up to the town administrator to set the date, since the motion didn't include any dates specific. Okay? All right, next item is a rail trail?
Yes. I guess I'll start with the crossings. You just heard some public comment. I know you have other public comment. This, this is really a twofold discussion. One, as I'm sure you've gathered, we went through an extensive selection process to narrow down a consultant that we're, we're ready to recommend. That consultant was Vanessa Hagan in Brussels, VHB, out of Bedford, New Hampshire. They have an extensive amount of rail development experience, head and shoulders above all the other firms that we talked to. We're following the request for qualifications procedure, you know, which is required for TE and CMAC funding, so there is no scope and dollar amount identified yet. What we'll do is identify the firm, and then we'll set up, we, as a matter of fact, we already tentatively set up a meeting for Wednesday afternoon if the board approves our selection, and we'll get together with them and define the scope of the work they're gonna do, and then they would present us with the budget to perform that scope. That being said, the next part of the discussion, which is what you heard comment on just a few minutes ago, the scope and how much effort we put into various components of that scope are critical to defining the budget for this project. The Department of Transportation, we applied for a grant that identified fully actuated pedestrian crossings across the rail trail, painted crosswalks, flashing lights. That is what the budget would support. That grant application was accepted and approved by DOT. However, it was made clear that we still had to go through all of the channels of DOT to get whatever design we end up with approved. The Traffic Bureau of DOT would have the final say on what exactly those crossings would look like. And so far, they've made it pretty clear to me and others that their guidance tells them that in a speed limit situation above 40 or above, painted crosswalks are not something that they would recommend. They're okay with a yellow warning beacon, as Lowell said, a new rapid flashing beacon, something that would really catch the driver's eye. They're okay with that. However, a situation which would give the pedestrian priority or the bike user, the rail user, priority over vehicular traffic is not something they would support. They cited a federal guidance document to us as the basis for their policy. We have researched that, that same guidance document, and we feel that there's enough information within there to allow a signalized crossing. I come to you with a recommendation, also based on my own personal experience. I'm a frequent cyclist myself. As the board knows, I use networks of trails down in Massachusetts, and one of them I provided you, the one I use most frequently is the Minuteman Trail, which goes from Bedford, Mass into Cambridge. That trail, if you've never gone on it, literally has thousands of riders a day. It is an older, more established trail, but it is actually considered a commuter route into the city of Boston. The terminus of that trail is the El Wif subway station. So a lot of people, they have huge bike lockers at the El Wif station, so people ride their bike into the station, lock their bike up for the day, and ride the subway into the city for their job. I'm not saying that Goffstown will ever develop to that extent, but I'll tell you as a frequent user of that trail, that the only way that trail is successful is there are a couple of very, very high-traffic-volume crossings, two of them in Lexington. Very, very similar, almost identical, to our crossings of 114, 20,000-plus cars a day, 40 mile-an-hour speed limit. And when you ride up to those crossings, there's a gate that's presented to the rider to make sure that nobody just rides straight into the road, and there's a push button. Most times, when I approach, I hold off pushing the button unless there's just no brake in traffic, and, you know, if you go there during rush hour, obviously, just like Mast Road, it's just a steady line of cars, so the only way to get a brake is to push the button. It's not like you're tripping an entire signal. You push the button, they get a red light, it stops the cars just long enough to cross, probably 20 seconds, then they're back to green and on their way like nothing happened. I try to envision, as a matter of fact, I've experienced it, our rail trail, when you go with kids, just the way it's an angular crossing, trying to cross 114, when there's steady flow of traffic, trying to wait for that brake with little kids, it just is not something that's gonna be a, a safe thing during those times of day. So in my opinion, for what it's worth, I just don't think that our trail will ever develop to its full potential unless we pursue these signalized crossings. My feeling is, right now, we're at a perfect time to do it. We have the funding through this grant to pursue it. I think the, the timing is such that to show alternate modes of transportation and to really encourage it along the 114 corridor shows a progressive step on the part of the town of Goffstown. And, you know, in the beginning, with the amount of trail users that we'll have, the cars on 114 will barely even notice the disruption, because it's just, the trail's not that popular. Manchester will develop their trestle. Slowly but surely, the ridership on our trail will increase, but it will be a gradual increase. Everybody will have plenty of chance to get used to it. So my recommendation is that we pursue it while we have it. It's not a guarantee DOT will approve it, but all through the consultant selection process, we really focused our energies on the firm that we felt would be best suited to help us convince DOT that it's time to revisit their policy. And I think we've, we've managed to find a firm that's capable of doing that. Obviously, I want to have this board's support, because it's gonna require a little more work, a little more time, because DOT is literally gonna be changing the standing policy that they have in place, and that always requires a little more effort on our part to get them to do that. So that is the recommendation twofold. One, that we approve VHB as our consultant, and two, just to have the discussion in whatever you want these crossings to look like, so that I know when we set scope, what we're actually gonna pursue.
Just one second. So there's two things you're requesting of us? One is to select the, okay, um, okay, could you... Is there a second?
Yes, this, I... No, you did it.
Motion to accept the Public Works Director's recommendation to accept VHB as the consultant.
And there's a second, aye.
I gave it to him.
Okay.
I thought it was appropriate of me, Mr. Pierce.
Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed, abstaining? It's unanimous. Okay, before we go on to the other thing that you're requesting, I just wanted to read these three emails from S. Kentargis. "I am not able to make the Selectman's meeting on Monday, wish to comment on the rail trail crossing design, which may be up for discussion. I'm concerned for the safety of both rail trail patrons as well as the travelers of vehicles. When a driver is traveling on South Mast Road, there needs to be a warning in advance so they can prepare for this unpredicted stop. To stop suddenly could cause other vehicles to hit from behind. Having a boundary well-defined is also important so the driver can gauge where to stop. Also, a marked crosswalk would be taken more seriously where there will be people crossing the very busy road. Please pass the message on for the meeting. Thank you, Sue Kentargis." Next one is from Jacqueline Gagnon. "Regarding rail trail crossing, I request you hold firm with the New Hampshire DOT for the safest possible rail crossings for the Mast Road rail trail crossing locations. As a frequent trail user, I have found it both difficult and dangerous to cross Mast Road due to, one, variable and excessive speed of drivers; two, multiple distractions around the ball fields, vehicles and people walking to and from; three, cars entering and leaving parking and business locations at both the Villa and the Pro Landscape locations; and four, the unpredictable appearance of snowmobiles crossing Mast Road to enter the trail. However illegally, they move at great speeds across the road and confuse and distract drivers." And the third one is from Joanne Hu. "Please accept the recommendation of painted markings and flashing lights. It is crucial that our rail trail be as safe as possible for the people of this community. Because of the economy and gas prices, there will be a significant amount of people who will be using the trail. Also, because of the rising cost of health insurance, many folks will be trying to follow a more healthy lifestyle and be using the, the trail as a source of exercise. Our trail will be a great asset to Goffstown. Let's handle her with care and safety." Okay, so, any questions of Carl? Nick?
Just some comments. I'm a little confused, because I know the board, and I won't speak for the board as a whole, but I know we discussed this at great length about a year ago. We requested some guidance from DOT, and they sent back some information pertaining to various tiers, tier one, tier two, tier three. Tier two, from my recollection and from what I see reflected in the July minutes of last year, were exactly what most people have spoken about today, painted crosswalks with motion-activated strobe lights on warning signs. Speaking for myself, and again, I won't speak for the board, I was not in favor of stop signs, stoplights, traffic lights, simply because those are the things that we have avoided. It was one of the reasons why we put in a roundabout, we're close to Norman Road, so I was not in favor of that. But I most certainly am in favor of, and in fact, because I believe Selectman Pierce had said that the strobe light arrangement was much less expensive, 15 to, $10,000 to $15,000 per crossing. I mean, I think we should explore potentially utilizing the thermoplastic-type markings versus just painting, so that they're more long-lasting, they don't fade, as well as whatever markings at a distance we can to alert drivers that a rail crossing is coming up.
So are you indicating you're in favor of the strobe lights?
Basically, sign, warning signs with attached strobe lights that would activate when a pedestrian or bicyclist approaches the crossing.
Okay, Carl, the crossings that we're talking about on Mast Road, those crossings are in the jurisdiction of DOT, are they?
Correct.
So it's gonna be up to DOT to decide what they want?
Correct.
For that. As far as the thermoplastic, they're the ones that are responsible for the plowing of it? They're the ones that would be responsible for the maintenance once this is done?
I assume if we did crosswalks, we'd be responsible to paint them.
So we would be responsible for these crosswalks on 114 in the state portion?
Yes. Like, like we are with the sidewalk on 114, we still plow that even though it's within their right-of-way.
Okay, okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Also, whatever light arrangement would be put up, the town would be responsible for the maintenance of that, and, you know, feeding electricity to it.
Nick?
And from what I gathered, the state's position, at least the Traffic Bureau, is that they do not want pedestrian crossing to have precedence over vehicular traffic. So we, we would basically be trying to argue with them to put in...
That's correct.
Traffic lights.
And just to clarify, they don't even want painted crosswalks. Their, their view on the, soon as we put paint on the street, it's inviting somebody to, to think, it's misleading, people will think they have...
Right-of-way.
The right-of-way, so they, they view even the paint as a liability. So I think if, if the DOT had their way, we would have flashing warning lights, and that would be it.
Now, you had mentioned angled. My understanding is that one of the things in the grant is to make that crossing perpendicular to the road, so it would no longer be a length, lengthy angled crossing.
Yes, and to achieve that, we need to get several easements, which we don't have.
Understood, right.
If we're successful with easements, that's true.
If I may, I would just assume, and you never know, but I would assume it would be much easier to convince the DOT to allow us to put in a painted designated crosswalk with motion-activated strobe lights versus a painted crosswalk with traffic lights that give the pedestrians precedence over the traffic.
It's hard to, we have enough guidance document to go all the way. We're gonna use the same guidance whether we go halfway or all the way, so.
Carl, go ahead.
Mr. Chair, if I could recap what I think I've heard up to now, is the highest level of safety we could achieve is a activated stoplight and painted lines on the, painted stripes on the road.
Right.
The next tier down would be painted stripes on the road with the rapid rectangular strobe lights.
Right.
To alert the, essentially, they alert the driver that pedestrians in the crosswalk area.
Right.
The next level down would be no paint on the road, or, you know, striping, and flashing lights. I guess the lowest level would just be the regular sign and no stripes. And you're urging that first one?
Yes.
Push button, activated, and the grant asked for an amount of money to make that happen, but it is an uphill struggle to convince DOT to have the flexibility to do that.
Right.
And our design firm, we, we've picked, it's their job to put forward a favorable argument.
Right.
The longer they fight for that argument, the more they cost, right?
Correct.
Carl, on the striping, okay, one of the concerns that I have is, you mentioned the amount of vehicle traffic that's on this road, approximately 20,000. We can't keep striping on our roads...
Right.
...throughout the year. As you know, this time of the year, we come through the wintertime with the sand on the road. You can't see the center lane, you can't see the left turn arrows in Pinnardville. When you come down Daniel Plumb and you try to make the left turn on a Mast Road, you can't even see the designated line, so when you go there, you don't even know that there's a right turn lane and a left turn lane.
Right.
So the concern that I have is with the crosswalks, is how are we going to address that issue?
That would be part of the design, to come up with a more durable, something more durable that would work in these applications.
Well, let me just say one thing about one thing that's more durable. I've been on this board for a little while.
You're durable.
Always, I must be. I must be. But we've always looked at crosswalks, crossings, it's always been an issue. We've looked at different types. Here, we're talking about thermo types. Now, Manchester's put some on that are over there on...
Kelly Street.
Kelly Street, that have gotten ripped up within their first season. I've talked to you about stamped ones that I've seen in other states that were painted, so this is not something that's...
Right.
I don't, I, I don't have any level of comfort that we can say we're gonna put one thing down and that's gonna work.
Right.
And what I have a concern is that it's all at our expense, so if we put this thermo type down, that we really, I think we may have used it once or twice in town.
I think we're gonna use it for the roundabout.
Well, we've used a couple of different thermo products.
Yeah, we've used a couple of different thermo over the, over the...
If I could just clarify, we haven't used the inlaid yet.
No, not yet. It's, that's supposed to go in the roundabout.
Right, that's the one where you, where you go in a grant. I guess the concern that I have is that until we have an idea of what this maintenance cost would be, is, is an issue as far as the markings. But I mean, I think that's something that we have to, we have to consider. I mean, unless we had a marking that worked great and we say, oh yeah, we tried it over that crossing over there on the back road, or we tried it someplace, and it's gonna work great over here with this amount of cars, I'd have a...
Right.
...a little different feeling about it. Do you have anything else, Nick?
Yes, Mr. Chair. That's largely what Carl is seeking our guidance on tonight, is how, what type of infant, what type of scope does he give to the design firm to push forward with? And one of them could, could be simply a very durable striping on the roads, and then let the design firm take over and present options.
I was gonna make a motion that we direct the Public Works Director to work with the design firm and DOT to pursue painted crosswalks with signage and a motion-activated yellow strobe light system.
I'll second that.
Okay, can I ask you about the motion-activated strobe light system? How is that set? Is that set so that when pedestrians come through the rail trail, it sets it off?
Not pedestrians. The way, the way the motion-activated ones work is a magnetic loop similar to traffic, so when a metal bicycle passes over it, we would activate it automatically. A pedestrian, we would still have to have a push-button activation for a pedestrian.
When you say, I'm sorry, when you say metal, I mean, would aluminum pick the stuff? Would it pick up an aluminum bike? I mean, considering a lot of these...
I'm not sure how that, I'm not sure of aluminum.
Not that that's that big a issue, but I'm just saying, I would...
Well, I think the carbon fiber is getting more viable, too.
It would be activated somehow, but a lot of the bicycles are changing from metal to aluminum, so that's just a...
Still have the push button.
Yeah, that, it'd be a dual system at that point.
Okay, that's, okay.
Any other questions? Any other discussion?
Carl, if, if we push for what the motion is suggesting, a rapid blinking strobe lights and striping and standard signage, if in five, six, seven years from now, volume is increased, if we become more concerned with safety, what would be our options then towards, I'll call it upgrading to a full-fledged stoplight? Would we still have the same problems? Would they, would the, the town would bear the full expense, I assume?
I would, I would assume, unless you manage to get another grant, the town would bear the full expense. All of the conduit and those things would be in place, I would assume, but you'd have to change out signal... But you'd have to change out signal heads and signage and-
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a, um, request a modification on that motion for discussion here, if, if the others are willing.
So you're making an amendment?
An amendment. And that would be, I would like to have the crosswalk signage, but with a full stoplight activated by push button. I believe that's what your initial recommendation was.
Yes.
Okay, for clarification, can we have a, an explanation what's the difference between these two lights?
Well, the, what Selectman Pierce is suggesting would give the pedestrian, the, or the trail user, the right of way with a, the stop traffic situation, a stoplight for traffic. So the traffic would come to a complete stop, the trail user could cross, then traffic would resume.
And the other way is just-
Just a warning light.
It's just the yellow flashing light?
Yeah.
It would normally be off.
Right, yeah.
And only activate when-
Only activated when someone's there.
Yeah, it's activated with that. And again, I have one, just one sec, one, just a question, and it might have been what he, what Selectman Pierce asked. Can the yellow flashing warning light be converted to a stoplight later?
I, I don't see any reason why it couldn't, but I can't answer that with a hundred percent certainty. I mean, I'm assuming the controller would fit in the same kind of cabinet, and the conduit would be sufficient, and the mast arms would all be the same, but without really digging into the design, I can't say that with a hundred percent certainty.
Okay, well, if I-
Would I be allowed to make a clarification? I think you're missing some information.
Let, let me try first, Mr. Chair. I've seen the web advertisements for the rapid rectangular strobe lights. And they are essentially a box that is maybe six inches high, foot and a half wide. It's mounted right on the standard signage, the pole for the standard signage of a, an icon of a bicycle or pedestrian. And that's the extent of the lights. It's a, just a rectangular arrangement, six inches high, eighteen inches wide, and maybe three or four strobe lights that are randomly flashing. That's not a, a pole that you would mount a stoplight arrangement on.
Steve?
If it was an activated stoplight, what do we, is it just one light, or does it go from yellow to red? How does that work? Or is it just, just, or is it someone just driving down the road and this light just turns red?
The ones I'm familiar with, flash yellow, unless they're activated, then it goes to red.
All right, so it would always be flashing as yellow, someone goes in to cross, they hit the button, and then it turns to red?
The, the ones that I'm familiar with.
Okay, and so that yellow, I mean, just from a driving, if I'm driving down the road, also this thing just shuts to red? Trying to picture it.
I, I support what Nick suggested, simply because we have talked over the last two to three years about trying to keep the traffic moving. And I think this is a healthy compromise. It's better, a, a strobe situation with a painted crosswalk or delineated crosswalk is far better than nothing, and it's far better than just having a crosswalk. The notion of stopping traffic on that road doesn't make sense to me, simply because of the amount of traffic that we have. And we've, we've, we've embarked on a plan to put in another roundabout to keep the traffic flowing, albeit slower. So I, I, I think I've, I've been sold on that concept, and that's why I won't support this amendment, because I think Nick's proposal was a, was a, was a good, healthy compromise on it.
I believe I had a second.
Well, I didn't get to that point yet, I didn't know if you had another comment you wanted to make?
No, I don't.
If you don't have another comment, is there any further comment or discussion on the proposed amendment? So there's no second to it, so the amendment dies, for lack of a second. So we go back to the motion that's on the floor, which, could you read that back, Catherine?
You'll have to help me. The motion was-
Direct the Public Works-
Yeah.
Director.
To work with a consultant and DOT to acquire approval of durable crosswalk with motion-activated flashing yellow- warning lights?
Warning light.
Warning strobe lights, yep, and standard signage.
And this is gonna be at how many crossings?
Three.
Three.
Okay, just so that we're all-
Rebridge is same, yeah.
One is owned by the town, where two DOT sets the vote.
Saying, just so that we're all know what expectations we're looking at. Is there any further discussion, comments, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, all those abstaining, it's unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, before we leave the rail trail, I just have a quick question. On the design at the, the Villa Crossing, a good portion of that, at least from the road end, is currently used for parking during baseball games. Is that being addressed in the trail design? Will those parking areas be eliminated? How is that being handled in your design?
Address that?
Go right ahead.
On the side of the field, on the side of the road where the ball fields are, the trail reaches that parking lot from the, at the very far end away from the ball fields. So we're not impacting the informal parking arrangement in that gravel area. That entire gravel area is town land. The, it's the opposite side of the road that we have a concept of putting five or six parking spaces on the other side. And that, so that we would fully develop the other side of the road, which is a, right now, a small rec, gravel area with a telephone pole.
So would that parking be for trail users only?
It, I don't think such signage would work, but it would, that would be the intent of why we're building it, as a trailhead for trail users. Very possibly during ball games, it could be used by others, but that's for the good of the community, I think, at this point. And that was a decision we had in the conceptual plans, not to try to fully develop a parking road associated on the ball field side. At further expense, we don't know the, how long those ball fields may be there.
I just didn't know how it impacted them, thank you.
That's a good question.
I kinda suspect that formal parking spaces may be much less than what the informal cars can do.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, well, before we, before we move off the rail trail, I think last week you were all given an email from me, as well as Selectman Pierce developed this handy handout. I met with Kathy Cusson, who's in charge of the facilities down there for the county today. And we discussed access and how we would get at that. We've had one contractor come down and assess this with us. It's not a small fix for the, the slope failure. We'd be looking at somewhere in the area of, probably something to the tune of forty or fifty thousand dollars to repair that slope at a minimum. And then the culvert failure, I would probably recommend that we get a structural designer involved in that, which is not included in these numbers, but we're looking at twenty or thirty thousand dollars to deal with that culvert failure. Of the two, the culvert failure concerns me the most because it involves moving water. So that's, that's an area that will continue to wash out. The other area, though it involves, obviously, the damages occurs when we get heavy rains, we could do some minimal grading, regrading of the trail, the direct water away from that spot. That, you know, it's very likely that it wouldn't, it wouldn't move again. There's no guarantee of that, but it's quite likely it wouldn't move again. However, if you, if you've gone down, looked over that hill, it's a pretty, it's a, it's quite a, it's quite a, a failure. So cleaning up that slope, you know, is probably something we'd wanna do eventually. So I really just wanna get the, the board's feeling on, you know, is this something that we should, should jump in and deal with? Should we talk about hoping we get through the year and budget for it next year? You know, I can, I can kinda handle it either way, I suppose. It's, as I said, that culvert concerns me, just because it's, I don't know how long that would last, a pretty good hole in it now.
Go ahead.
I wanna expand this to maybe this, two problems. One is the structural engineer to look at the collapse of the culvert, and what needs to be done to make that, to restore it to its good condition. But there's also the problem is that while the inlet to that culvert is on town land, access to that inlet is on county land.
Right.
And there is no road leading to it, steep embankment, fully forested. So access down into the inlet is gonna take a lot of coordination with the county. If a construction road may have to be built, trees may have to be cut.
Yeah.
Would, would that type of analysis be part of your engineering analysis in the repair?
I, I think it would need to be, I think that would all have to be considered. Just so the board is aware, Captain Cusson, that the commissioners meet a week from next Wednesday. And he is planning on bringing this to them, I provided him a copy of this. And he's planning on going to the commissioners to seek their approval to give us access. The slope failure in the downstream side of the culvert are accessible down the old, there's an old road out behind the county that goes down to that lower field, and we drove down in there today. So that, access to that part's not really an issue. As Selectman Pierce said, though, the upstream side where the, where the failure actually is, there's just no, there's no ready access into it. So we would have to build our way down in.
Question on that, so this is the original box culvert from when the rail bed was originally built?
Yeah. Yeah, and what it, what it appears, just, just looking at it, is probably back to the big floods, you know, that we had. The water probably got higher than the, what the culvert could handle and found its own way in. You know, I can just see the whirlpool developing on top there, and it just washed all the material and pushed the stone in.
So as far as, as far as the inspection on that, is that something that would be done, like with a TV? Or is that something that would be done-
Oh, no, you can walk, you can walk.
Man, manually?
Yeah.
Yeah, manually.
Yeah, the, the challenge is, you know, as we look at it, is how do you, how do you shore the slope up so you can get in there and work on it, you know? Because right now, it's just a pretty precarious situation.
It's already at the point where any rock just continues to roll downhill.
Right.
Right.
Slope is so steep.
Right. So your question to us is?
Yeah, I, I, if we wanna pursue this immediately and, and deal with it immediately, I obviously need to find the money to deal with this and-
But I think, though, the first thing, though, if we need an assessment, the assessment of it would tell us this is something that's an imminent danger of further collapse?
Yeah, and, and again, depending on how far you wanna go. You know, I'll just, just to remind the board, when we had the slope failure in the river, I think we've expended seventy or eighty thousand just in engineering costs on that one. That is a full geotechnical engineering analysis. This does not have the river, you know, the, this doesn't concern me as much as that one on the river did. Because it didn't have the moving water.
It could still run into a lot of, a lot of money.
Yeah, just a quick question. I, I know we've been for many years looking at the rail trail and pursuing grants and votes at town meetings. Have we ever had an assessment from start to finish? Because this is the first slope failure we've had.
Right.
We've had one near the landfill. To look at the entire rail system and give us an appraisal of pro, potential problem areas, issues that may, you know, with a good rain, what, you know, air, give us an idea as we go forward what we're potentially facing in either maintenance, potential repairs, failures like this. Has that ever been done?
No, no, all we did was survey it.
I, I would present to the board that that's something that I think would be prudent to do, to just get a handle on what are we facing once this trail is completed? Or what failures we may face even before the entire trail is, is completed? To identify areas like this, and there may be others lurking out there that just haven't either shown up or been discovered.
Well, it seems to me that wherever you have a box culvert, you have this potential. And there's quite a few of them on the old railroad.
Mm-hmm, or the other, you know, where we had the, the erosion, the gully erosion.
Well, the gully erosion over there, Orange Pond, may have been a little different.
There, there are a lot of steep slopes, so I mean, it's-
Oh, yeah, no, I know.
There's a lot of sections like this.
Because don't forget, part of this also is on portions of this rail bed, it's been excavated for the sewer line.
Right.
So that, so that's gone down, gone down to that. The only concern that I have, I understand where you're coming from, Nick. The only concern that I have is that I don't want to, I'd, I'd hate to see us get bogged down on studies and studies, and coming up with funding for studies and waiting for studies before we do anything. I mean, I understand this is an issue here. And there may be one or two that we have in, in the future, but my only concern, are we getting bogged down?
I'm not advocating multiple studies, I'm just looking, I'm advocating one assessment.
Well, first of all, if we're gonna do this, it would have to be for a grant, because I wouldn't support coming out of current funding, because we have enough problems trying to get through the year budgetarily with the stuff that we have to do with the shortfalls that we have on revenue.
No, I, I fully agree. I fully agree. If I may, I just, I just think it's prudent before we invest large sums of money into the rail trail to at least identify the trouble spots. I would hate to see us halfway through this project or almost completed and then have a major failure of the trail that we can't afford to fix for multiple years. I just think it's prudent to get an assessment and identify those trouble areas, see how we either repair them first, work around them, just to give us an idea of what we're working with. That's all I'm advocating. Any other questions, Carl?
Yes, Carl, would it be for this culvert, that the failure is about fifteen feet into the culvert? The opening is roughly four feet wide and three feet high. And it's clear, there's no, currently, there's no brush in front of the opening. But would it be prudent for Public Works to clear down the brush that's upstream of that? So, you know, the, that, because that brush and heavy rainstorm would get washed down into the culvert and block it, and then make matters worse.
I guess I'd wanna talk about the, defining that scope, because upstream is a long ways, depending on how far you go with it, and it's all county land, so I can't keep up with my own town streams, never mind. County land, too.
But right now, it's, it is completely open.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I, I guess what's in front of us right now is basically an assessment of what we have here. And if we got that assessment, then we can make a determination of where we go from that point? Is that what you'd like from us?
Yeah, yeah, and, and, and again, where we go to pay for, I mean, it's, you know, let's face it, we're gonna come down, and we're gonna be talking about, do we cut a road off the list to do this? And once again, use road plan money for something that we didn't plan on. And that's not a call that I really wanna make. So it's, it's kinda backed us into that corner that I hate to be in, but it comes down to how, it all comes down to liability. How much do we wanna gamble with this? How long do we wanna wait? Like, we wanna put it off and budget for it next year? And, and just hope, the, the trail, the failure down in the sewer line sat there for four, four years before we started to fix it, and it didn't move. And that was on the river, so I can't guarantee it's not gonna go anywhere. But by the same token, I'm a lot more comfortable because there's no, the toe of this isn't in the water. So it's, it's, it's something that I feel a little more comfortable with. The, the culvert failure, that's a different matter. But that's also the tougher one to solve. But that's also the tougher one to solve.
Right, but I guess it comes down to we own the culvert.
Yeah, yes, we do.
We own the culvert. There's a problem, there's an issue, we're aware of the issue. We need to assess the situation so we could take, put a plan together. And if we didn't do that because of budget, it could completely fail.
Right.
And then we could be in a bigger liability situation.
Yeah.
It'd be a thirty foot pool of water or fire.
Which wouldn't last long and we'd be into what Nick talked about, where we'd have a big gaping hole in the rail bed.
Is there any danger of the trail itself sloughing at a point where you can make, potentially where there were pedestrians on it, individuals on it?
I can't guarantee that, that with a hundred percent certainty. We did put up construction fence to try to keep people away from the visible failure scene. My impression is this wasn't something that happened like that. I mean, this was something that built over months and months and months. I can't imagine it being just this catastrophic, you know, walking across it, wah!
That's all I was concerned is if, if there was any danger.
But there's no guarantee.
You never know.
Yeah, there's no guarantee.
You never know. I mean, you could go down in Pinnardville someplace and find a hole in a pavement like this, they can come by and they can look down and say, gee, the hole goes down, one foot, we'll put a cone on it, car comes in at the stop sign and all of a sudden it's a giant sinkhole. You, you never know.
Yeah.
So I guess that raises my next question. Do we have any liability here where we should mark off the trail and not allow people to go through it?
You have, haven't you?
We, we've marked off half of it. All of the, the visible failure line, we went a couple feet outside that and just marked it all off with construction fence.
We know of a pothole, we put a cone on it and then we repair it. And the same level, same level of prudence has been done. We've marked it.
So we need to go forward then with Carl's request for an assessment, so we need a motion?
I'll make the motion that we proceed with an engineering analysis of the culvert failure and process to correct it, restore it.
Then how are we funding it?
Sorry, I still had a question. When you originally spoke, you were saying, you gave a dollar figure of around thirty or forty thousand. And that was to take care of where the slope had destabilized, correct?
Um, yeah.
And, and that was, I'm trying to get an understanding of this, that you're saying, hey, we're gonna bring in some fill and fill in this, these, where, where it's destabilizing. Then the second portion is that you're saying the cause of the destabilization is because as the water comes down through that brook, it's washing in a way. Is that?
The, the slope failure is water coming down the actual trail bed itself. You know, if you, if you look at that section of trail bed, it's kinda worn down in the middle.
So it's not that, it's not that it's washing out and the base is creating it to come down?
Right, we believe it's going over the lip.
And so, so there's two separate problems. And so when we look at the large, the pictures with the large holes, that's from the water coming down from the top of the rail trail.
Right.
And it was during this per, that when we look inside, during this time, we look inside the culvert and we're seeing that, what, there's a stone out of place? What are we looking at?
In the culvert, there's a, there's an offset stone.
There's an offset stone. And the concern with, and though that has no effect on where the washout was, the concern for that piece is, is, I'm trying to get the understanding.
There's a whole, there's a whole another washout there. On the top of the culvert, there's a big washout.
So it's two separate sets of.
They're a hundred yards apart.
Okay, that's what I was trying, okay.
Yeah.
One's on the upstream side, it's inlet to a culvert.
Okay.
And the other's on the
Down slope.
The down slope side, a hundred yards away.
And so this, when you were talking, this, this, this thirty or forty thousand, was that to take, just to fill in then the slope, that one that's the, what I'm gonna call the top, from the top, top down?
The, the slope was twenty to thirty thousand, that was, or the culvert was twenty to thirty thousand. And that was to get that stone back in place.
Okay.
And fill in that sinkhole.
Alright, so.
The slope was a larger number. That was, that was more like a fifty thousand dollar number.
Okay, so those are the two different numbers.
Yeah.
Those are the two different numbers. And you're, and from, so you're saying you want to study them, though you think those, those are the corrections, you still want to study them to make sure those are the proper correct?
Yeah, these were just, you know, talking to a contractor that's working on a similar situation for us and just his idea of how much it would cost.
Can you estimate the cost of an engineer to do this structural engineer?
Yeah, that's where I was.
Well, if we focus on the structural engineer for the culvert, you know, we're probably looking at something like five to ten thousand dollars. If you get to a geotechnical engineer to look at the slope failure also, that's a whole different kettle of fish. That's.
Cause I was just beginning to wonder if the, the cost of this engineer was gonna add up to the cost of doing what you felt was the repair. Okay.
Yeah.
My, my motion was to proceed with the, the study alone.
For the structural?
For the structural study of the inlet of the culvert.
Okay, is there a second for that?
I'll second.
Okay, is there any further discussion? Comments? Nick?
I, I guess we're just handling one thing. What are we doing for the slope failure?
Marking it.
Until we have the assessment on, underneath?
The assessment's just on the culvert?
Correct.
On the slope failure, I, I'm assuming you're gonna do some re-grading to prevent the water from hitting that same
Yes.
failure spot. And that perhaps could be a short-term solution.
Right.
And then continue to observe the actual failure site to see if it's getting larger over the next few months or year.
Okay. Does that answer your question?
One other.
Go ahead.
Where the funding's coming from? For this study?
Carl, if it's a five thousand dollars more or less to do the engineering study road plan this year? Or is it, do we need to absorb the risk and do it next year?
Uh, you, you've all seen the road plan matrix. We planned the money as the prob, as the year progresses. Whether or not we do better than we hoped on projects remains to be seen, but we have plenty of contingencies waiting out there if we have money left over, so. It's not like I have extra there sitting there.
I thought you had a line for engineering studies. Okay, is there any further discussion?
Just for the sake of discussion, I'm just, I'm not gonna support this at this time. Because I, I really don't want to take away from the road plan any more than we, we have currently done. So I maybe support putting this off towards the end of the year so that we have an idea of what's, what's remaining. So that's the reason why I'm not gonna support this.
Well, I think, I think the, I understand where you're coming from, but I think the intent of this was to get an assessment to see where it is, if it's something that possibly could be temporarily fixed. And if it's, to assess the imminent danger, to assess the risk that we're at and to also assess how long it could stay in its, possibly stay in its current stage without a major flood. Am I correct, Carl?
I would hope we'd get something like that, but I don't imagine an engineering firm's crystal balls much.
So.
I would think they're gonna come back and say that it's something we need to deal with.
Nick?
Just for clarification, maybe I'm confused. We're just dealing with the culvert.
That's all that the motion is dealing with.
Right, which is the, that hole which probably has existed since the Mother's Day flood. Potentially.
Yeah.
And was caused by water level rising and then seeking that.
Right.
So it's, the slope isn't failing there. It was just that drainage hole that was created from the.
Well, now the slope, yeah, now that the stone has moved, you know, I assume every time it rains, some water is carrying material because it's a good sized sinkhole now. We're starting to lose the slope now.
Ten to twelve feet diameter round, you know, focused down into where the daylight goes into the culvert.
I guess the question though, is if we didn't take the side of the road plan, where else would we take it?
Not a lot of extra anywhere in the operating budget either, but we, you know, we could put it into consulting services in the operating budget and hope there's savings elsewhere.
What's your line for consulting services?
Forty-five oh three oh. I mean, you mean the budget line?
Yeah.
I don't remember. It's, you would actually probably support this number for right now.
Do you have anything else that you specifically have to go out for bid for services to come out of that line?
In Public Works Consulting Services is like our drug testing and all of those sorts of things. But it's also, there's that hazardous waste. I don't wanna call it contingency, but there's like five thousand dollars in there for in case we find hazardous waste in one of our jobs. I.e. the, you know, railroad ties when we're digging up a sewer line or a drain line, that sort of thing that we, to deal with. So, you know, of any line in the budget, that's probably the one I would throw the dice with. If November, December is favorable, the savings would be in our salt line. Believe it or not, there's actually money left in the salt line. But you have no way to know what November and December will bring.
Well, would it be better then to leave this in the consulting line for right now?
That, that would probably be my recommendation.
Okay. So I guess the net answer to your question, Nick, is gonna come out of the consulting line.
Thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion on this? Saying none? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
So Scott, Nick or Nick?
It's three two. Motion carries.
Okay. Thank goodness, that's the last of the rail trail items. The next thing is our favorite topic, which is the Mass Road widening project. After our last visit, we went down and in detail started to look at widening both sides of the road to accommodate a restriping effort that would get that shoulder in there. And I, I guess I have to apologize to the board for going down this road because this is the classic outcome of a project born out of a discussion without the proper planning ahead of time. We got down there and started laying the, the project out and realized that there is no way on God's earth that I would feel comfortable walking with my back to that traffic with only a white line between me and the cars. So it kinda got into the whole, do we want to encourage pedestrian use? And of course I said, well, we're gonna paint bicycles, there's gonna be bicycle use. The problem with using it for bicycle use is, and designating it as such, bicycles are supposed to follow the rules of the road. So do we really want to encourage bicycles to be riding on the wrong side of the road against traffic? One way of travel. So I did a little research into, how about if we split it and had smaller shoulders on either side? The recommended width for a designated bicycle lane is four feet, which would mean having to come up with eight feet. We're barely coming up with five feet as it is right now. So once again, it turns it into a, do we really want to go after another three feet through there? Because it certainly is gonna lead to the impacts we were trying to avoid when we talked about working on both sides of the road. So it's, the other option, of course, these minutes will reflect that we've discussed this at great length. But the other option is we just widen the shoulder and we put a white line and we don't designate it as anything and let everybody take their chances, which I think we all know what happens if somebody gets hit by a car. Certainly be a lawyer somewhere that'll research. How did that wide shoulder come to be? So I don't know what the board's pleasure is, but I'm left scratching my head as to what exactly we really ought to do down there. The Ash Toe Guidance Document on Bicycle Shoulders does say in certain circumstances, if you can't get four feet, anything's better than nothing. So I think if we ended up with two and a half or three feet, I don't think anybody'd come running after us if we made that decision for the right reasons. But it would, it would put two narrow shoulders on either side of Mass Road. It would facilitate bicycles. But again, it's, it's, it's a lot of work to get this in there for what we're gaining.
Questions, Carl?
Yes. Another option would be to have the homeowner move a fence off of town right away.
It, it's not only that one property. There's a, if you can down there and really walk this ledge on both sides of the road, there's that one big ledge outcrop by the house you're thinking of, which pushes you to the other side of the road. And if you look real close on the other side of the road, when you get near the office building there, there's a pretty good hump that we, we pretty much see rocks in the woods that look to me like all signs of ledge there as well. So we're, you know, you, you're basically restricted by those two big humps that are left. Unless we want to get into removing ledge, which blows the budget right out of the water. And just to pass along to the board, I mean, a lot of people are coming out with drainage issues now. And as Phil certainly knows and the rest of you probably have a good sense, there's existing drainage issues in that section because there is very little drainage system. Over time, the traffic has beat down the shoulders and created these little pockets of water that, you know, people deem as controlling the, the flow of water. When we upgrade this, we're certainly gonna move those puddles. And every time we move a puddle, it's gonna make people come out and say, hey, are you affected the drainage of my property? So it's, it's just one of those, it's, it's gonna create all these issues. And just want the board to be aware in some direction as to what you want me to do. There's no ideal answer down there without spending a heck of a lot more money than the eighty thousand dollars we're planning on spending today.
Question for you, Carl. What is the scope, what is the width? From what point to what point are we talking about in Mass Road?
You mean the length?
Yeah, from, from what point?
Danus Park, basically to Marion Street.
And Marion Street is where, so people on TV.
Marion Street, almost to Moose Club Park. There's, when you go by Moose Club, there's a little section of sidewalk that goes beyond Moose Club. It kinda ends at Marion Street.
Almost safe to say Moose Club.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. So this is the traditional flooding that's in the residents' driveways that we have been trying to deal with since before I've been on this board? That we have unsuccessful in trying to get an easement for a pipe to carry that drainage off of Mass Road. And we're gonna, and we're here looking at doing improvements without doing that. I think, I think if we do something like that without the drainage, I think we're not doing a, I think we're doing a disservice. I think we need to address that drainage before we make any changes to that. That's, that's my opinion of this. Steve?
This is a topic that we've talked about, we've discussed it, we made a motion to go forward with it. Just gonna pick up one of Carl's comments. He says, you know, and not, not, it's not pertaining to you, but the, but the comment made a lot of sense in light of what we're trying to do or what I think we're trying to do. He says, jeez, if we only had a bike lane on the right side, I'd hate to walk with my, with my back to the traffic or pedal with my bike to the traffic. Now I'll take away that lane and walk with your back to the traffic and walk with the traffic. That, so, so you understand that what I'm trying to, what I'm trying to compare there is that the option of doing nothing to me is not an acceptable option. In other words, we're saying it would, if we had, if we had a four-foot lane and we didn't have any other side, if, you know, that if, you know, you wouldn't want to have your back to the traffic, but yet we're gonna be com, by doing nothing, we'll be comfortable to say, hey, we're not even gonna give you a lane to walk in. You're still gonna be doing it with your back to your traffic. And it's still one of the most traveled roads we have. It's also a section where we have two crosswalks to nowhere. Crosswalks to nowhere. I, I still haven't quite figured out those two, but we have them there. Other comments were brought up also sometimes saying, well, what about rails and trails? Well, rails and trails is not gonna be a substitute for connecting these areas because quite frankly, you're not gonna be traveling rails and trails at night. I mean, this is where people go, you know, and you'll see people at all times of day and night, walking, riding, et cetera. It's the only area that we don't have a connection or a safe place to travel on. And I think you brought up a good point, Phil, by saying for over thirty, well, like you said before, your time, so I'm thinking thirty years anyway. I'm not trying, but I mean, it's been.
Seen abuse, I have to go through a hundred and thirty, did you say?
But I mean, for thirty years and, and, and kinda thing that we, you know, we, we run to, and I understand the difficulties that you're running into, Carl, but then we throw it down the road again, you know, it's, if not now, the question would be when? And then we can go back to studies and you made a comment a little earlier today saying that sometimes, you know, if we just throw things to study, it doesn't, you know, we don't, we don't get going forward anymore. I think it's one of these times we just have to make a decision and go forward and make something happen. I don't know what a study will bring us down to. I don't think we're gonna see drainage. It's not, we won't, I don't think we'd have the funding for that. But I think we can make that area for traveling much safer than what it is.
Well, I have to say one thing is when I get phone calls and I go down to people's residence property and I see the water that's. and I see the water that's backed up into their driveway four inches deep and it's coming in and it's six inches from the garage. And it's always gets worse. Whenever we repave Mass Road because we're raising the pavement on Mass Road, we increase that puddle, keeps getting closer and closer to these people's property. Now, if we start going and taking a fence off somebody's property, we're talking about widening this road over there and if we're gonna wind up having more problems down there. And now this water is gonna go another six inches and get into their garage. All right, I'm not gonna stand there and say, you know, gee, we only wanted to spend eighty thousand dollars to widen the road so we can get a bike lane here. And I'm sorry that now that you have six more waters, inches of water into your garage and that you've been waiting and we couldn't get the drainage. I would rather put the money in the proper place, take care of the drainage easement and fix the project the right way.
I guess my comment to that would be, I do, knowing the area, I do know where these dirt ruts are. And I think like any puddle that puddles up, once the puddle fills, where does the water go? I guess I'll ask the question, where does the water go automatically?
It overflows and seeks the lower spot.
And seeks the lower spot. So when these puddles do fill, it's automatically, they fill, they go over. I mean, and if you're at, I mean, just like when it goes in front of my house, when the puddles, when the crown of the road and the water comes over and it fills, it flows into the yard, just like anyone else's yard. And, I mean, water and water flow is something that we have. We don't have drainage on every road. It's one of those situations. But if if you're saying that's a good idea, if you wanted to have a timetable and figure out where the funding is gonna come and you're saying this is something we do next year, I I guess it would be something to talk about. But if we're just gonna throw it down the road saying sometime in the future, then I'm not, I'm not in favor for that. But if you're saying, hey, this is something we can do and here's our timetable and here's where the financing come, then I'm open to that discussion.
Carl, was to do it with drainage and sidewalk curbing, wasn't C I P. at one time, wasn't it?
Three hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Or not. Something like that. It was a lot of money. When we did the work last year in Pine Grove, border around, before we went in at Cove Street, we did do a lot of drainage work down there. We actually put the drainage infrastructure into the intersection of Cove and Pine Grove at a depth that we could run it up the hill to Lynchville if we needed to. So we created not a cheap solution, but a solution. If we had to keep it all on the town right of way, we can get it into that system. But it would involve cutting the new pavement all the way down to that point and running up out into Mass Road. But the grades were such that it'll work.
Does it go anywhere near the current sewer project?
No.
Okay. Carl?
When I voted for this earl, you know, before, I did it under the premise that it would be kind of an easy fix, that we could do something. Everything that I've been hearing the last two or three months is that it's not gonna be an easy fix. We got problems. And that's where my concern is, is that drainage, it's then we don't have enough, we don't have enough width on one side, not enough width on the other. And we got, if we do, I don't know. That's where my concern is now, is that I thought we could get it done, do it for eighty thousand and 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 have a substitute for a sidewalk to, for safer pedestrian and bicycle traffic. Now it seems like everything is not working out. And there's more problems than there are benefits. That's how I'm seeing it now. So I I can't support this now. I can't. This is too many problems to it. Whether it be the drainage, whether it be not having enough width, I just, I think we gotta take care of the drainage. That's a big issue there. And it needs a sidewalk. That's what it really needs. But we don't have the money. And but there are a lot of other places that need that as well. So I, it's good, good intentions, Steve, but I just don't see it. There's too many, there's too many roadblocks right now. From what I can, from what I've been picking up.
The roadblocks I've been gathering here have been, at first it was going down this process and then the first thing we ran to, I believe, is one of the homeowners has his fence on our right of way. Is that fair or is it close to it or on the right of way, which was the first?
In the right of way.
That's not a really...
Well, that was the first one I heard. I'm just putting that out there. Cause then that's when we started talking about, well, do we go left and right? Does that, does that make sense? So that's why it's, I think it's important to speak about that. So when you say these roadblocks, I'm wondering if some of them are those that we self-imposed. In other words, we expected that we would have our normal right-of-way size, correct? And then we ran into that first problem. And then the second one, we talk about drainage. Well, drainage is everywhere and everything, but I don't know if that drainage, I mean, having little dirt puddles on the side of the road saying, hey, by the way, some water is gonna come over those puddles. I mean, those weren't there in history. The only, historically, those have only gotten a little bigger because people driving them and walking them. But they weren't there originally. Where did that water go originally, then I guess the question would be. It went to the side of the roads like everyone else would have. In other words, when the road was built, pockets of little dirt weren't dug out to hold, to be used as water retention. I mean, that's, I'm just saying, these things were naturally there. And what we're doing is taking, and we are correct, we are taking a simple widening of a path on the, on the, on the one side of the road, which is supposed to be within town land, correct? And and that should be simple enough. And then the second piece that we talked about is drainage and we're using it as, and I think we're using it as an excuse, quite frankly. I mean, prior to this, those ruts weren't there and water moved its natural course.
Carl, what is the possibility of not paving it, but putting, enforcing what our easement actually is in the right-of-way? So if there's a fence there, take it down, please. Thank you. And putting our gravel shoulder for now? Because you're gonna need a base, no matter if you pave it or you don't pave it. And let's see what happens. Now, obviously, when you put pavement down, you're gonna have, we don't know where the water is going to go, the runoff, but at least it's an area for pedestrians to walk on gravel. Might not be suitable for bicyclists, but bicyclists typically on the road anyway, and they should be. And just see what happens from there. We can always go back and and maybe pave it. But I'd just be curious, is that an option for us? Because in some areas, just having the ability of having, you know, a gravel shoulder off the, off the fog line is is good too. Is that something that we could explore?
For most of that run, it would look just like it does today.
Yeah, but there's a lot of uneven, unevenness and ruts and it would, it would smooth out a lot of those ruts.
We could essentially do a shouldering job down there. I mean, that would kind of accomplish what I think you're talking about, with the exception of that real narrow area where we'd have to move the fence.
Yeah, but at least you're, you're clearing out some, you are clearly delineating, you know, that space, albeit with a sho- unpaved shoulder.
Yeah.
And let's see what that looks like and how it functions. And then we can maybe come back and say, okay, you know, is, what's, what's, should we pave this thing now? But I would agree with Selectman Fornier. I mean, if somebody put a fence in the right of way, then you need to take, that fence needs to come down, period. And that should not be something that is an impediment to proceeding. However, drainage and other things could be problematic. But by at least doing that shoulder, maybe we can meet somewhere. That's just an idea.
Question for you, Carl. About how much alteration do we need to do to go up to the town's right of way? This residence fence is in the right of way, so this residence fence has to come out. About how much land is gonna be discarded? What's the approximate width? I mean, how much beyond his fence? Are we gonna have to start putting, and I don't know, is there a slope there? Do we have to put a stone wall up?
Well, there's, there's a, in an ideal world, the butter would work with us and we could come up with something creative if we have to live within our strict right-of-way line. At one end, the fence encroaches out four or five feet into the right of way. It's very flat there, so we could literally just move the fence back and it wouldn't be a real big problem. There's a telephone pole there that would have to move. There's a mailbox there that we'd have to relocate. As you move across the frontage, there is a slope that starts to come up. And the fence in that area is two to three feet into the right of way. But you have also a slope and there's some lilac bushes. So you have to move the fence back and cut the slope down to the, so that it could be used as a shoulder. Now you're talking, okay, do we do a wall? Do we do, are we allowed to go beyond the right of way to gradually slope it in? You know, that would all have to be worked out with with the butter.
Now, where, when we change this, will we be adding, or do we even know the answer to this question? Will we be adding to the runoff that's gonna go out into Mass Road?
We would theoretically, if we add gravel or pavement width, yes, we're increasing the runoff. Either way, gravel's considered an impervious surface.
Right, and just, just for the record and for everybody else out there in TV land, I'm not talking about little puddles that kids could go jump in. I'm talking about puddles that are four, four to six inches deep. The whole width of a residence driveway from Mass Road all the way up probably thirty, thirty-five feet up their property. That's full of water that we get on that location. So we could theoretically be adding to that problem, to those residents' front yards.
Yeah, obviously, we would try to avoid that, but it is certainly likely or possible.
Has there been a full engineering plan done of sidewalks, curving?
Not a...
Storm drainage?
Not a detailed one, no.
Is that something that could be done, say, next year? To actually get the design fully done and then it's like, well, what the, we said two years ago, projects that are shovel-ready for a future effort?
If, that would be a matter of setting priorities. If that became the priority, it's something that could be done. But we have plenty to keep us busy without doing that as well.
I'd, I'd object to that because there are so many roads that are in disrepair that we have delayed. And I'm not saying this is not an important project. It is. But there are a lot of of roads that need work. Unless we can get a grant or something, which now they're far and few between. If we can do it something, you know, inexpensively, that's why I voted for it. I'm fine with it. If we can do a shoulder inexpensively, I'm fine with it. But you're talking about, you know, probably eighty or a hundred thousand in engineering and then another half a million for the, for the sidewalk. And how do we justify that when we don't have it right now? We don't have that infrastructure. And I'm not saying that's not problematic, but we have existing infrastructure that is in disrepair and and if we don't do those things, we're gonna be in worse shape. That I couldn't do. I think that would be a bad, a bad priority.
Comment to that. I, I, I agree with Scott. I, I mean, this started off as a, as a simple project. I think it was the idea of the right of way that's kinda thrown it off the track a little bit. I sit back and and we're dealing with these very limited funds and yet I see us that we're getting ready to do, we'll do a sidewalk on the dead-end street for a handful of people. But the most traveled road we have has a section with no sidewalk. It does, and it's been like that for thirty years. And what we're saying is that we'll allocate funds for, and and all we're looking for here is like, I wanted to say, we'll call it the bike path, but all we're looking for here is the bike path. But we'll allocate funds on a dead-end street for a sidewalk that's already there, that does need some work, but yet only a handful of people go on that and no one's traveling down the road at the speeds that are in Mass Road. And no one has the volume. And the other thing that adds up there, that's a spot where there is three lanes of traffic. And when those three lanes fill up, I'm telling you, that is all the way across the road when people are going in and out, going in and out of the condo units, et cetera. And, you know, there's three lanes of traffic there. And we have no place, you know, and you see them all the time, people walking, people riding their bikes. It's the only, it's the only road, the only stretch of road there that does not have any, any safe, suitable access for people to go from point A to point B. Either coming all the way from the village or going from Bonnaroo or the kids are getting off the bus for school. There's just nothing. And I think we're allocating funds to other sidewalks. It, it just doesn't make sense to me.
Any other discussion on this? So where are we? Carl needs some direction.
I'll make a motion. Make a motion that we proceed with that lane as we spoke about. And if, and if there's an easement problem, then I think we need to exercise that and and continue with the project. Unless someone has another idea that's, that can be materialized somewhere in the, in the near future.
Give me a second. Yes, second. Okay.
And I, it's not, if I may, it's not an easement issue, it's enforcing our right-of-way of the width of the road.
So I'm confused now. This motion, does this motion include directing Carl to notify this butter that he has to get his fence out of the right of way?
If it's in the right of way, then I guess that would be the answer.
And that was my second.
It's too, I'm just, I'm sorry.
Scott?
I just wanna make sure that I understand what, there was a, there was a different mo- the motion that you made was to proceed with a plan to spend eighty thousand dollars to put asphalt and et cetera. It was seconded on the premise that I, that was almost implied that it was just enforcing our right-of-way issue. To me, there's two different things. I, I, I totally support the right-of-way issue. I do not support going ahead with this plan as it has been, as was proposed months ago because it's too problematic at this point. So I, I think we should try to work towards a, you know, a gravel shoulder and see how that goes. That's inexpensive. We can still enforce our right-of-way. We can still later down, put down pavement if necessary, once we start tweaking where water is starting to flow potentially. And it's something, it's not what, what we wanted originally, but it's something. And it's clearly delineated. So I guess if, if the motion is the way it is now, I'm gonna vote against it. But I do support the exercising our, our right-of-way. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I clarify, you would be, it appears though, one compromise is rather than widening the road with asphalt, but then putting down a good gravel shoulder.
On both sides.
On both sides, if necessary, and enforcing our right-of-way concerning a fence.
But I heard you say gravel is an impervious surface anyway and will still add to the drainage issues.
Possible.
I, I understand. And by the time you do that, why not just finish it with the, cause you, you know, we're never coming back here. It's been thirty years. It's not gonna change. And if you're saying, hey, if we're already, if we're, if we're doing that, what is, and you've leveled off the, leveled off the side, what is the difference of putting down, down the pavement? You've said we're going to take, you know, we're gonna be using this area, we're going to take it for a locking or bicycling. And you filled in, you filled in the ruts and the holes. And eventually, what'll happen with those ruts and holes if you just put, if you put gravel down?
They'll come back.
They'll come back.
I understand that.
Nick?
Just some clarification, Carl. You also mentioned there was a section where there's a fence, fence encroachment, but even removing that fence doesn't alleviate the problem. You have a slope. It would entail excavation and potentially a retaining wall of some sort or?
There's a, if you look at that fence, there's a very, very dense, developed lilac, several lilac bushes right against the fence. So, you know, the logical thing, if we took the fence out and lowered the slope, that'd be the logical thing. But if you lower the slope, you're right into those lilacs. So it's, you know, do you cut the lilacs, which are on, probably on private property? Or do you move them, which they're very old and developed lilacs? So I don't think moving them would be real easy. That's the conundrum.
And you also mentioned some areas of potential ledge.
Depending on how far you cut.
That on that side of the road as well?
Yeah, that side and, and across the street, there's an area as well.
And how is the board, if this motion were to pass? And how is the board, if this motion were to pass, how are we gonna handle the abutting neighbors if they have more water on their property? How is this board gonna address that issue? How is Carl gonna have to handle that? We just gonna say, gee, we're sorry, but it's water seeks its natural level? Or what's gonna be our answer to it?
I think I can comment to that. I mean, this happened when it came down through Dana's Park and North Crest Water, you know, the words, and I've spoken with neighbors, and as they rebuilt the roads, they reproduced the crown. And, and some people are saying, hey, I got water here where I never had it before. And the reality is, yes, that's part of, part of some of these processes when we come in and we build roads, water moves, water transfers. I mean, yeah, it's, it, there are some things that, that are, and let me rephrase it. There are some things that when we go in there and we do roads, it happens every time. Is that a fair assumption, Carl?
We always chase water.
We always chase. I mean, it'd be like saying we're never gonna do another road again. We're gonna change how that water moves.
Okay. Any further, uh, do you expect to be able to handle this project within that same amount of money?
I think, I think I would need to get the butter on board with how we're gonna deal with the encroachment on their land to accomplish what we're doing on our land, before I could definitely answer that.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Aye.
Nay. Motion fails, three, two. So Carl's still sitting there wondering what to do.
I'll tell you what I am gonna do.
What's that?
This would go way on the back burner.
Yeah, I'll make, I'll make a motion that we postpone this project until we can adequately fund either an engineering study first.
Deal with the drainage?
Comprehensive project that will deal with all the issues that we're, we've discussed.
See, the problem, I mean, if I may, that's a death sentence for this thing, we know that. I mean, who are we kidding? I mean, we have so much on our plate in CIP. This was on CIP and it was taken off CIP.
It, it's actually still there, it's just way-
It's just so far out, I mean, but the reality of it is that with the limited funding that we've had, it's a death sentence. I mean, it's not going to happen. It not, in the next ten years, it's not gonna happen. So we could do, we could spend money on it, it's just simply not gonna happen. You know, I'll go back to what I said before, I don't, I understand that we have this issue with, you know, the asphalt versus gravel, et cetera, but I, I guess I'm lost there where if, if, if there is a water runoff issue, you're, you have a gravel shoulder, and if you need to make adjustments, you can, you're not ripping up asphalt. You're just simply re-grading something. If it doesn't work, you can take it out, whereas asphalt, you can't. And then it, it clearly sets a visual image that this is a si, more a safe area for people. And I've walked that, you know, I've, I've done the rail trail, and I parked my car and I've had to walk, and I understand exactly what you're saying, but I think you can accomplish something similar and not have the exposure of having all this water going into people's property, and doing it in a manner that, yeah, even if there's one area where it's two feet wide, and then that's only for twenty feet, and then it opens up to four feet, that's great. I mean, but it's something that's a little bit safer than it is now, which would, and I don't think it would cost a whole lot to do it. And I think that's a healthy compromise here, and it's something, it's better than nothing.
Nick?
Just a question, is there a way, I'm just thinking out of the box now. In lieu of a sidewalk on Mass Road, is there a way of making a connection? The rail trail is fairly close on Dana's Park. And following through, making a connection to shaws or into that area from the rail trail with signage that we can direct individuals from that first intersection by one fourteen, that the trail is available to get to the shopping center, as well as along the way? So in other words, try to move pedestrian traffic and bike, bicycle traffic off of Mass Road?
That's what the whole purpose of the rail trails is to do anyway.
Yeah, if I can comment to, I mean, if I can comment to that. Rails, the trails is a, I think it's a great thing, I'm supportive of rails and trails. But I don't think it's gonna take away from people who are at night, are gonna wanna go down to rails to trails when they're going from, walking from shaws or peeling from one end of the town to the other. You know, it's just not the kind of, you know, it's, there's no, there's no streetlights, there's no patrolling, there's no, you know, it's, it's just not one of those pieces. And we talk about these puddles, and if you rain, and you, yes, I've seen the puddles, Phil. Where do you go then if you're walking on the side of the road and there's puddles? Where is the next place you step, Phil? It's in the road. You start walking the white line, which we see all the time. Now we, now we take them from, we don't, we don't wanna put a sidewalk. We're gonna put it to death if we put it into, into a study, it's 'cause it's been thirty years already. And we talk about these puddles, and you have some rain, there's some water. Now all of a sudden, someone's walking down, and they next, then step into the road, and they walk the white line. And you know, I think everyone knows what I'm talking about. The most traveled road in our town does not have a sidewalk. But we'll go forward with sidewalk plan and do some other sidewalks and some dead end, some dead end streets where there's limited traffic, the only people there are residential, and the speed limit's much slower. But, so when you talk about these puddles, those puddles, you know, as much as you, you know, I, I understand your concern going over there, but there are also a bigger concern, if you're walking down the street and that puddle's there, I'm now walking in the street, in the rain.
Make a motion that DPW shoulder with gravel the side of Mass Road to eliminate standing water.
And to exercise our-
And, thank you, and, and to exercise right of way for encroachment if fences-
I'll second that.
Okay, could you clarify what you mean for gravel to eliminate standing water?
In times of storm, there's pools of water on the shoulder of the road. Town right of way, pools of water.
What about the water, though, that goes from the, from the road all the way up to a person's drive garage? That's three to four inches deep on their front, on their-
I'll take up the argument that was made earlier this evening. When that pool of water is full, it's going to seek its drainage.
Yeah, it's probably gonna go in the garage.
Whether it's towards the driveway or if it's towards another end of the length of the puddle.
There's been a second?
I did.
Any further discussion?
Just a quick question. Carl, this would be actual gravel versus the reclaim mix?
It could be.
Could be?
Yeah. If the board would like us to use good gravel, it's much less than eighty thousand dollars, we could probably do that.
And you're comfortable with the cleanup you're gonna have to do in the spring on the gravel?
Yeah, yeah, we would, yeah, we would compact, I mean, it would, gravel, I think, would actually work better.
But all that gravel is gonna wind up on all the abuttes properties.
Hopefully that wouldn't happen.
I mean, I'm gonna make a comment to this. I appreciate that motion, I really do. But it puts me in this part where I look at this, I'm saying, okay, so we're going to do it, we'll put the gravel, and we're doing everything but the tar. And all I foresee is mud down the road. I foresee plow, you know, picking up, and, and I, and I look at it as a higher maintenance piece. And it still doesn't make it, you know, a worthy, well-traveled piece. The tar, when we said we were going to extend it and do the tar, that was the compromise. That was the compromise. And if we're going, if we're going, dirt, all you're talking then about is just that we're not gonna lay that one little patch of tar that extends it over and makes it clean and travel, and makes it a little maintenance.
Maybe you will down the road. Let's see what it does.
Can I just clarify? Because when, when you made that motion, I heard something different. If we're talking about just shouldering the road, I'm talking about taking that nice shiny shoulder machine out of the garage, few loads of gravel, day, day and a half, Mass Road, all the little depressions are gone, and there's a nice strip of gravel. I'm not talking about what we've been talking about, which is boxing down the road bed, bringing it back up with decent gravel so it could be paved someday. Those are two different things. If you're talking about boxing out the road bed and bringing it back up, I'd be in Steve's camp. If we go that far, why don't we just make it black and be done with it? If we're talking about kinda, let's try a quick fix experience, experiment, and it's a day, day and a half with the shoulder machine down there, then it's a very minimal expense to see what happens to the water. Phil's point, or your point was correct, we could always go dig it out if we had to, if we created a problem, it's, it's not much of a loss. So I just wanna be clear what, what I heard.
You correctly heard my motion.
And, and just a quick comment, a gravel shoulder is a good thing for a road. So it's really not a loss.
Uh, right.
It, it, it does protect the-
The edge of pavement.
The edge of pavement.
Yeah. And it would smoothen it, so people walking would-
And you're not gonna touch the fence, the residence fence?
That complicates things, and it's up to, if this motion passes, it sounds like I am.
The motion included exercising the town's right of way.
One, one could proceed without the other, you know, gravel, the shouldering could proceed.
I guess I'm just still at a loss here, because it's not clear in my mind that it's as simple as it sounds. Where he's talked, Carl says, he visions just going out there with the shouldering machine. If you're gonna exercise the right of way and have that fence come down, I'm hearing there lilac bushes to deal with, and there's a slope, and there's a possible wall, so that's a little bit more than-
A pole, that might have to be real.
Right.
Quick question, does a shoulder of some sort exist there now?
There's a-
That could be shouldered with gravel?
Couple of feet of pavement behind the white line right there.
But no dirt shoulder?
No, the pavement kinda ends right at the mailbox and the fence, yeah.
And how wide is typically your shoulder?
Usually a couple of feet is what we try to get, but, you know, in most cases, it's gravel.
So if you did two feet shouldering, would that fence be in the way?
If, if we left the fence the way it is, you'd have a two-foot paved shoulder up to the point where the, the turn lane at Timberwood starts. That's where the road pinches out to nothing. That is where we'd have to widen gravel to give people something beyond the white line to ride on, walk on.
Nick, just a quick question. Is, is that a location where you could shift the line a little? To the other side of the road to increase the paved portion?
A, a little, but then you get right into that other knobble ledge, so it's, we, we might have to snake the alignment. You know, although right now it's a smooth curve, we might have to snake an alignment through the knobs. Those are all the things we were playing with when we were down there, is how could we kinda sneak this through?
The, the point of my motion is to seek a, a quick gravel solution to the shoulders and the low spots that are perpetually puddles and after rainstorms. And then provide Carl guidance that he would actively pursue the fence correction to the fence line, and any shrubs, and any slopes. And then, depending on your negotiations, you might wanna come back here and present us some solutions. But it's, it's our desire that you, through this motion, that you aggressively pursue that.
And that was my desire and my second, so.
Carl, what's on the other side of the fence?
Lilacs in one place and grass in the other. Yeah, grass.
And how far back is the right of way beyond the fence?
It varies at the-
Approximately.
At the property line, it's five or, five or six feet probably. At the lilac bushes, it peters out to nothing, goes from two and a half feet to nothing probably.
Okay. Is there any further discussion?
I'm, I'll make one point. I guess from where I'm sitting here, I'm gonna support this, obviously, but I just wanted to make a comment to this, that. I remember we were talking around about it Wallace Road, and we were talking about the sidewalks and the granite and the brick, and I was at that point saying, you know, let's just do this tar because of cost effects, et cetera. And I find it, I find it really a sad state of affair that we went and we did all this granite and bricks, et cetera, then we go to a place that, and we're not talking a dead end street, and we're talking that we'll put some dirt down. And I, then I look over at the circles and over in Grassmere, and I got sidewalks to nowhere with granite and concrete, et cetera, to nowhere. And we'll do the most traveled road, and we'll put some sand down. But I will support this, but I'm highly disappointed.
Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
All in opposed?
Nay.
Nay. Motion carries three, two.
So Phil and Nick were nay.
All right. Didn't mean to keep you that long, Carl.
You got one more?
Oh, I got one more.
And Carl, do me one favor?
Yeah.
If you exceed the eighty thousand dollars, you come to the board and let us know how much more it is.
I'm sure I'll come to the board long before that.
Okay. Gotta take a fence down?
No, I think the property owner needs to take the fence down. Last time I checked, the property owner put it in the town's right of way, which is illegal, which means it's their responsibility, actually.
No, DOT, I think, put it up, working with the, it's a pretty complicated project. DOT actually did the widening when they did the intersection.
Yeah.
That's why the homeowner feels like it's their property, because DOT did the surveying, set it, the slope easement, and all that stuff, so.
That wasn't mentioned before.
It, it was part of the widening and the intersection.
All these problems keep coming up, and I thought you were aware of them.
How am I gonna know that DOT, and what just came out of his mouth? Uh, how am I gonna know that? It's impossible.
At what point does it become a state road?
At the lights.
At the lights.
But when they, when they redid the intersection, at some point, they came into the, you know, the widening came in. So they actually provided me with the easements and the slope easements and the plans, because they had them all on file. Okay, the good news is-
What is the good news?
That so far, our contractor on Wallace and Mass Road is on schedule, by all appearance. As a matter of fact, I don't wanna say it too loudly, but their hope is that they're gonna be ahead of schedule, although I provided you with a copy of their draft, which shows them-
Who is this you're talking about?
Over at Wallace and-
What happened to the bricks?
Those are gonna be done.
Where'd they go?
They had to replace those sidewalks, so they moved them out of the way.
Yeah, but I, I came by, I didn't even see any bricks.
Oh, they're there.
The other day, they were set on the side, I didn't see them coming back. Like they picked them up, like maybe they were the wrong size bricks?
No, no.
Okay.
But as a matter of fact, they started, I think they started laying them in at the crosswalks, at the tiptowns. So by all accounts, things so far are going well. I forwarded you Alex's summary of last week, and this week, they'll be continuing to pour the sidewalks, and so everything seems to be moving forward.
Nick? I don't wanna put you on the spot, but I hear by all accounts, and things seem to be, as Public Works Director, in your opinion, yes or no, is this project proceeding as it's supposed to be?
Yes.
Thank you.
Your time's up.
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
Um, I think that's all.
Now, Carl, you could stick around.
Wasn't this, I have to-
I did have a question for you, but I can't remember what it was now, since our, our lengthy discussion, so. I don't remember.
If you think of it, you know where I am.
Yeah, I know, but it was something that we wanted to be out.
Wasn't there something?
I think that's in the town administrator's report.
Yes.
Why don't, I don't turn the whole about enough, there was-
Um, yeah, Kent had asked me about the cost, and we're waiting for a class of public services. We don't even know if it's affordable. But if it proceeds, and if it is affordable, we're talking about a flag that will have a light on it twenty-four seven, and I wanted to know if the board wanted to have a public hearing on that subject, since it's in a residential area.
I'm sorry, I thought, I didn't know if it was something you had to comment, I guess.
I'm sure it'll involve me sooner or later.
Yeah, at some point, no, it was something else, but I don't really know, I, I, I don't know, we'll have to hold off, I guess. I don't remember what it was, I didn't write it down, but anyway. Guess you're dismissed, Carl.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
You could just have a request for a recess.
Is there a second? Is there, there's been a request for a recess. Five minutes?
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna take a five-minute break. Okay, we're back from a five-minute break, and the next item is a- And the next item is the acceptance of a donation of twenty-five dollars from Ryan Wood Condominium Association for the Grassmere Town Hall Restoration.
So moved. Seconded.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Uh, next item is the town administrator's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, consensus folder tonight is AP warrants. Event permits for the New England Relay on June twelfth and a wedding on June eleventh in Gostown Main Street, a home day on June fourth. Uh, annual junkyard operator license renewal for Hebert's Junkyard. Inter municipal agreement for the automated response with New Boston. Acceptance of drainage easement map fifteen lots one sixty and one sixty-eight. And acceptance of drainage and system easement map nine lots thirty-three, seven, forty-six and sixty. And state of New Hampshire DOT application for preliminary estimates for bridge aid, bridge aid.
Motion to accept the consensus folder with discussion. Is there a second?
Yes, seconded.
I just had a quick question on the inter municipal agreement. This board is signing it and then the New Boston Fire Chief is signing it. Does the New Boston Fire Chief have the authority to sign an inter municipal agreement?
No, I think it would, should be the governing body of the town of Boston.
Unless they gave him the authority.
That's what I mean, unless they gave him, so I, I think we would either need a copy of the minutes of that meeting where they did that
Okay.
Or have the board sign it.
We could do that.
I think that came up once before, last time, I think the I seem to recall we had a discuss, that, that was brought up the last time, but I could be wrong with something.
Okay, so subject to that, they've, subject to the fact that he's been given the authority.
Okay, uh, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous.
Thank you. Correspondence, you have a copy of, oh, I think we've already done these. No, we haven't. Copy of letters submitted to Conservation Commission from Evelyn Miller, an email from Kimberly Peace, an email from Carlos Adams. Would the board like to, um, respond to the, to the two Conservation Commissioners who were not reappointed, um, thanking them for their service.
I think that would be a good idea.
If we hold this discussion, because we have our, our, our committee reports later on and
Oh, okay.
Okay.
We do have commission reports.
Uh, assessment recommendations, two thousand and ten tax share Bateman's recommended for map seven lot one away and map eight lot fifty-one.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
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 It's unanimous.
Thank you. Cable franchise renewal committee, um, appointments. Jim Cook, I, I was able to get ahold of him, he was the last one I was trying to contact. He was the attorney who, um, was the alternate for Tony Martz ten years ago when we did a cable franchise renewal. And he's available. And then the, uh, town IT director and government liaison to GTV, which is Neil Funky. School IT director and school rep to GTV, Gary Girallaman. Uh, the assistant town administrator and the town administrator.
Okay, so motions needed?
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
Discussion?
Just a quick question, is it necessary when we create committees like this to have to do appointment papers, is that a requirement?
It isn't, but it gives us a paper trail and it's just ad hoc until the, it's done.
But the other thing too, it makes it official.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, then it's an official committee. Okay, um, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? It's unanimous.
Thank you. We will be meeting with Medville Executive Board on Wednesday, May fourth, six P M. at one fifty-seven Donald Street. Um, I've enclosed some material, this material, yeah, also in the mail basket. That Medville brought over, with their bylaws, uh, which is also on their website, I noticed. There's more information on the website and then the, um, I gave you the state website of five of their annual reports they've submitted, five years, but you can get all the years on their state website.
Scott, have you had a chance to look at that?
No.
Okay.
And unfortunately, I'm not gonna be here on Wednesday.
Oh, 'cause you were the one who had some questions.
I know, but I haven't had a chance to look at it yet.
Well, if you have any, um
I can email it to you.
Sure.
It's been posted as a public.
Oh, yes. It was up last week. We talked about this one, um, prior, the flag pole and the roundabout, how's the board wanna proceed with that? I don't even know if it's affordable yet, 'cause I haven't heard the price yet from Public Service to remove, there's like support lines that go through that area.
I'd be curious to see how much it costs, I mean, um
Well, who's paying for that?
I assume VFW would
Yeah, that was my understanding. I mean, they're raising money for, for that, for the flag pole and everything, or for the PSNH power line?
Well, who's installing the light?
The VFW, the, the power is there, we got a donation, there was a, a company that did a, uh, I don't know what you call it, a lateral drilling?
Horizontal.
Horizontal, that's, I'm, I'm sorry, so there, that company, I forgot the name of it, but they, they donated that, so there is a conduit in the roundabout itself
For power.
For power, and then, and speaking with Kent, there were volunteers that were going to step up. You know, this wasn't gonna cost anything for the town in terms of the, the flag pole and electricity and all that stuff, so. The issue is, is the, is the, of the power lines and if PSNH can step up and move them, then, um, then hold a hearing to see what type of lighting would be there, I mean, would it be something that, I mean, it is a residential area, so you don't want it to be, um, bad for the residents, um, but I've seen some, you know, I don't think you need a monstrous flag pole, you'd have a small flag pole, which would not really be, I don't think it would be, uh, light pollution.
When you say a small flag pole?
Twenty feet.
That's shorter than the one out in front of this building.
The one in front of this building is probably more like thirty, thirty-five feet.
Nick? And typically, if, if the, um, if it's a well-designed spotlight, it's very directed and it's just the flag that's illuminated it, it's not like it's not like a streetlight that is lighting a large area.
Okay, one question though, those are types that are in the ground?
Well, there's issues you have with snow, that's the problem.
Well, that's why I'm asking that.
Right, that would all have to be taken into account.
Okay, well, but I mean, it might be something since, um, when it comes up, I guess the question is whether or not we should have a public hearing on that or not, so, that's
I mean, the other possibility is that you don't raise the flag during the winter months, I mean, I, and if, if you can't get light on it, so you just wouldn't have a flag on the flag pole. If, if that, if that's an issue, Phil. Because the protocol says it must be lit at night.
There, there are pole-mounted lights.
Okay.
And there are lights that you can put on the flag pole that are higher.
Right.
So you, you wouldn't have that issue.
Okay.
But I think we, I think your question to us, Sue, is are we willing to proceed with this?
Right. And do you wanna have a public hearing to proceed with it?
Yeah, I would.
Yeah.
Okay, but I guess, uh, so we wanna get all that information first and then have the public hearing?
We have to, I mean, for one, if, if PSNH is not willing to move the, the lines, then it's all a moot issue.
They charge the town all the time to move lines, so I don't think they're gonna be donating it.
Okay.
I think we try.
Right, well, we've got the request in, but
Right.
Okay.
Just second to understand quickly, if the lines don't move, you're saying the flag pole?
It's a moot issue.
Flag pole, can I go with the lines up?
So, in your request to PSNH, Sue, you would, uh, provide them the reason for this as a memorial for a fallen soldier?
Yep, that's already been done, we're just waiting the response.
Right, okay. Further questions? Are we all set with that then? Okay, so.
Um, next subject is trying to get a handle on estimating, you know, the shortfall in the two thousand and eleven budget. Uh, as you know, it appears that the thirty-dollar state motor vehicle registration is scheduled to expire and, and there doesn't seem to be any effort to renew that. Which affects the amount that goes into the highway block grant and they've estimated, um, we will have a shortfall of seventy thousand ninety-seven dollars in highway block grant money as a result of that.
I thought, I read somewhere that we're gonna get more highway block grant money.
In the RFI fi-
Yeah, in the FYI. This year, because they instituted the thirty-year state DM that, that registration fee. So I would think this might affect us the following year.
You know, it's
In the FYI, I know, I read that.
I, I did too.
Right, but then they cushioned it with, but we don't know the effect.
I thought it was informing us that we were getting more money this year.
How are we gonna get more money this year?
That, that's with the letter, it was, it was advising us of what our block grant was gonna be this year. And it said we were getting more.
The one they posted that was in FYI last week, that one was a seventy thousand shortfall and that was up on the, um
It, it quoted the total annual amount and the amount of the check for this month.
Right.
Here's the letter.
Can I read it?
Go right ahead.
Uh, this letter is to inform you of a revision to the actual disbursement of block gray, uh, block grant aid funds, uh, the town will receive in April two thousand and eleven. The April payment is based on the actual amount of state road toll, gas tax and motor vehicle fee revenue collected by the state during fiscal year two thousand and ten and distributed under the authority of chapter two thirty-five, section twenty-three. References made to the December seventeenth, two thousand and ten letter communicating an anticipated upward adjustment to the state highway bla- uh, block grant aid pay, payment, this adjustment was calculated incorrectly as it contained revenue not subject to block grant aid distributions. April payment will be eighty-four thousand forty-three dollars and the total block, uh, grant aid for fiscal year two thousand and eleven will be four hundred eighteen thousand six fifty-six. Please note that this year's adjusted payment is nearly twenty percent higher than past years due to the thirty-dollar vehicle registration surcharge made available in the two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven biennium. Also, please be advised that a letter will be forthcoming to adjust the estimated quarterly dispersments available to your community in state fiscal year two thousand and twelve.
Which starts, for the state starts July?
July first.
So I, I mean, it was all, to me
So the quarterly payments up to July first are going down, they're, they're talking about their fiscal year, I'm talking about our calendar year.
Right.
They, between the fact that the thirty-dollar surcharge is going to expire and the fact that where, where are they at with the five cents reduction in gas tax, that all plays in.
So I guess, I'm, I'm confused as to, did we underestimate the revenue and will be a wash? Because we, we were anticipating
For half the year, we're gonna get twenty percent more.
Half the year, we're gonna get twenty percent more, and then for the other half of the year, we're gonna get
Less.
Less or the same as what we, I don't know, I mean, I, it's kind of Oh, you just passed it, Matt.
I just went past it.
Highway block.
Three Three hundred, uh, four hundred thirty-seven thousand six hundred and forty-nine dollars.
Aye.
Is the original number they had given us at the end of two thousand and ten.
And that's what we based everything on.
Yes, so there is a shortfall. It's not seventy thousand, but, but they're, they're talking, we're talking different time periods, they're talking their fiscal year, we're talking our calendar year.
It's, it's difficult to determine because, you're right, they're, they're on a different, they're on, they're off by six months.
Right. So it, it will be a shortfall though?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, yeah, if that thirty dollars goes away for the, the second half of this year, yeah, there will be.
Yeah, my understanding is it's been eliminated.
Right. And where did they go with the five cent tax gap, has that been?
I don't know.
Resolved yet? They were looking to do that reduction. So these, there's a lot, still a lot of unknowns.
Right.
Rumor meals, it's, that's been frozen, it's been frozen at two thousand and nine levels for a couple of years now. So that's not gonna impact us, 'cause we froze our estimate. Uh, same with revenue sharing, that was subject to repeal, but we didn't budget anything for revenue sharing, 'cause we didn't think it was coming back anyway. Uh, estimated over expenditures, uh, workers' comp were over by twenty-two thousand one hundred and seventy-seven. The reason for that is at the, at the end of the year, we were still exploring other options for workers' comp insurance. And so LGC used their estimate for our wages. So we'll probably see a credit, because when you actually do it out, it should be less, but they had to have numbers, so they estimated wages. We'll probably get a credit, but they don't do the audit for a while, we're still waiting for them, they're coming in this month to do the audit for last year, which is late, they usually do it like in January, February, but they had some reorganization. Um, gasoline and diesel, we had calculated based on the rates, there'd be about a twenty-five thousand dollar shortfall if we used the same amount of gasoline and diesel. Uh, and the retirement system, right now, um, there's talk that the state will continue to contribute twenty-five percent to police and fire. If they do, uh, we'll have a shortfall forty-four thousand, because we had received notice that it was expiring and they expected to go to thirty-five percent for this year.
Question.
Hold on, I thought we budgeted the twenty
No, we budgeted for thirty-five percent from the state.
Sue, we made a bulk purchase of gasoline and diesel a few months ago that we estimated would bring us up through late fall at the current rate of purchase of our, using gasoline and diesel. What, what does this minus twenty-five represent?
To get through the rest of the quarter. You're still gonna need gas and diesel, so if you're using the same consumption rates, I know you only purchased in the hope that maybe it comes down.
But it's still higher than it was last year.
It's, it's, it's increased since we made that purchase.
Nick? Um, I, I was just, there is some serious talk that in the second year of the governor's two-year budget, that that New Hampshire retirement will go to zero.
For two thousand and twelve, so when, when we do a, oh, they're on a fiscal year again, so that would start in July of two thousand and twelve, so when we budget for two thousand and twelve, we, we better bring it down to zero.
And we'll have a better idea, 'cause everything will have been passed by then.
And that, that impact was a lot more than forty-four thousand.
So we're at roughly a hundred thousand plus, assuming, I mean, these numbers are fluid.
We're not sure about the first one, but I have it right.
Uh, yeah, and we're waiting on the heating oil, um, and propane, we go out with the school on that and they'll lead person on that and Ray is getting ready to go out for bid on that, because it expired the end of April. But I think it, we can say that we're not gonna get a heating oil for two dollars and thirty-eight cents a gallon like we had enjoyed last year.
If I could ask, we're into May now, do we have a plan? Um, these are not one type, one-time expenses. You know, the, these are costs that could conceivably continue on next year and the year after.
Mm-hmm.
How do we handle a potential hundred thousand plus? Or is there anything we can do in the interim between now, because as the year goes on, it's, we have less opportunity to make up shortfalls.
Well, one of the things we're gonna have to do is we're gonna have to ask that question of the department, that's, 'cause as Carl mentioned, I don't know what's gonna happen. But then again, depends on the, end of the year with, what happens with the salt. That's only a portion.
I'm, I, I believe, if, if this was a higher amount, I think we have to clamp down on a hundred thousand dollars. How much we have put in a significant cushion in our fund balance? Um, so that would, it would, it would necessitate taking more fund balance, but albeit a hundred thousand dollars more fund balance next year to offset
At tax rate setting.
A tax rate setting, I, I, that's what I would do, I mean, if it was three or four hundred thousand, I think we've gotta, we gotta really work hard. A hundred thousand on a twenty million dollar budget, I'm not I thought I'm not concerned, it's not good, but I don't think it's something that I think we have to, I think we are, I think we are monitoring things, you know, quickly and I will say that we, we already have a policy that should someone leave, we, it comes to this board before we replace, and I'm satisfied with that. I don't think we needed to put anything else in place at this point, I think we can weather the storm using fund balance if we have to.
Yeah, but I think Nick's point is though, at least let's, let's keep, let's keep an eye on this.
Yeah, no, there's no doubt, we gotta keep an eye on it, I just, I'm not
It might be something that might be worthwhile to have it here on a ongoing basis. Okay, because as, as the change comes about and we know the amount for the block grant.
Mm-hmm.
That could be put in here and vice versa. And the other issue is, is where we stand with that fuel. Because that, that, that's another unknown.
Right.
And, uh, you know, it's great that we have a very healthy fund balance. Uh, we're very fortunate that we do. Um, but one thing that we have to realize is that, uh, we're not gonna be able to replenish it like we have in the past.
But one thing that we don't know is, I mean, it's monitoring all of our revenues because, um, we, more importantly, we wanna keep an eye on what a motor vehicle registration looks like. What, what about property, taxes, et cetera? So all those things, you know, do matter.
Right.
So we have to monitor it, but it's not just that, it's just what's everything else.
Exactly, but what I meant was this should be something that we're not just having a discussion with it today and then, you know, gee, we think about it in a month from now.
I, I guess what we should be asking for is what is, how is everything else tracking in terms of revenues at, you know, at our next? Maybe by June, you know, um, and I'm, and again, albeit it gives you six months, but a hundred thousand dollars does not concern me. But three or four or five hundred thousand would definitely concern me.
That was my next question. I, what, you know, cause, and, and I, I think Nick makes a great point because like last year, we, we were talking about these things, well, not the exact things, but we're talking about, we were talking about, uh, trying to balance that balance. And we were at the point where it wasn't enough time to react to it. And, and I understand what you're saying, saying, well, a hundred thousand, maybe we'll take that out of fund balance, but at what point do we, do we want, you know, are we gonna say we're gonna take other measures to it? At what, you know, what dollar amount, you know, what, and what space and time? Because if, by, by the time you get into late fall, it's just too late. I mean, I mean, do we put something in place that we revisit this in the, in, in a month or how do we, I mean, how do you wanna look at that?
No, that's why I said if we, ongoing.
We need to, we need to track the revenues, you know, and see how they, how they are.
Right, plus also the thing, next time you have a staff meeting or department head meeting rather, is have that discussion to see if there's any lines. As one that Scott brought up, if there's anybody that, that leaves, uh, such as the salt line or is there anything else in there that's, something may have changed that we don't have the expenditure.
Should we put that to a meeting then, like July or something?
Right, I mean, I'm, I'm not trying to rub salt in any wounds here. You know, the, the eighty thousand that we allocated for this other project won't come even close to that. So I think we have to kind of manage these things and also let, Carl is, is obviously always the one with the, you know, the budget that, you know, you can always defer. And I'm not saying that we should do that, but sometimes we'll know in another month, okay, you set aside this road, it may not happen and, and you plan on that thing late. But that's, that's what we've done historically. Cause we're not gonna make it up on, uh, toner cartridges and, and paper.
Or pencils.
Right. So it, it would have to be on something, on a significant purchase and or not funding, you know, if someone left and you didn't replace someone. That's the only way you're gonna make up significant.
Or even if you held, held off for a few months.
Right, that's where you can make some inroads, but.
Okay. That's it. Okay, uh, any new business? Old business, goal development? Okay, I assume everybody had a chance to take a look at this. And we've all had a chance to, uh, get the, our department and committee goals, right? You wanna go down, how do you wanna proceed? Do you wanna go down with what's on here first? You wanna go through this? Have anything in mind?
It's, it's basically, we've talked about it before. I, I don't, for the sake of time, I mean, it's.
So what I meant was like number one, is that number one okay the way what's here?
Yeah, the whole thing is good as far as I'm concerned.
Okay.
Cause I, I mean, I speak for my, only for my, um, for Parks and Recreation. I mean, what you have, what's listed here is, um, you know, is definitely, um, that's one of their concerns. The other one is more short-term and that's the preparation for, you know, Parsons Drive and Mast Road. That's the only other one that is a short-term goal for next, you know, to try to work on that. And they're doing that with DPW as we speak, so.
Right, cause they're working on a plan and they're gonna come back here with a plan.
So as far as I'm concerned, that, they, they kinda go hand in hand on that, on goal number nine, so.
Okay, Nick?
I just question on three, performance reviews for department heads, three A, do we have to say three sixty? Because that's a very specific type of evaluation, which may or may not be, but maybe consider a comprehensive.
Yes.
Evaluation or some other word versus specifying a particular type of.
Right.
Evaluation.
Well, I, I think though, I think the intent there was that we would get feedback.
And I'm, I'm agreeing with you there, but not using this particular type.
Well, I, I think, I think the reason why it's out is because that specifically is what that means, but if there's another term, so that if we change that term, that people look at it and think that it's something else.
I just put that in there because that's the term the board used.
Right.
Right.
During the discussion, previous discussion.
Do you have a suggestion?
I think the word comprehensive works, yeah. Cause three sixty is a specific type of evaluation process. It's actually very lengthy.
Yes, it is.
Um, very.
That's why I just didn't wanna tie us to that.
And to go from not much or anything to that is like, okay, taking a huge leap.
All right, that's fine if you wanna do that, all right. So that'll be considered an extension, an extensive.
Comprehensive was the word, was?
That's what I use, but I'm fine with any.
Oh, comprehensive.
Comprehensive.
And you could even put including department head feedback to the board.
How about a comprehensive evaluation with department feedback?
With department head feedback?
Yeah, is that okay?
That's fine.
Sure. Okay. Anything else in there, Scott?
I. Personally, I would like to get feedback on us. How we're doing.
From the department heads?
Yeah, it's different. Um, we talked about feedback. I, I took that as feedback on the evaluation process where you, did you imply?
No, I meant that.
For the board.
Right, feedback, I mean, we're asking.
Yeah, I'm, yeah, I would, I would want department heads or, or even employees to provide us feedback.
Isn't that kind of informative a little bit?
Yeah, yea and nay. I, I'm talking something where it's anonymous and kind of like, you know, like an employee opinion type survey for for the board and, and maybe even, you know, in that, in that respect, you know, I wanna know what, how can we do better? I mean, we gotta practice what we preach here. I mean, if we're, if we're saying that it's important that our department heads survey the community as to how that department is doing, then why aren't we under the same obligation? Whether it be, even if you start small and you start off with, okay, you know, what are, what's the feedback from our department heads first? Then after that, what's the feedback from employees? And then what's it from the community as to the job that we're doing? Now, informal feedback that I get is that there are so many three-two votes that, that it's hard to predict where this board is going to land on things.
It's always a different three-two.
And it's a different, and it's always a different three-two. But I just use that as an example, but I don't know if the board believes that's a, that's a worthwhile endeavor, if we wanna secure that type of feedback. Maybe we do, maybe we don't.
How do you propose that it's a vehicle for this?
Well, there's two, twofold. I mean, I think first and foremost would be to get the feedback through a staff meeting where certain questions can be asked. Sue could facilitate it, it would be anonymous, and then you would just report back to us as to here are what these concerns are from there.
Yeah, it'll make you mine as long as we don't kill the messenger.
No, no, no. And then from there, we can determine if we wanna dig a little bit deeper and then formulate the same type of question for, you know, um, and you, and Nick, you've talked about this where you can do certain, you can do an internal survey amongst employees and tabulate the results, and then you can use a survey tool to do it to the community. But first and foremost, I'd like to, I, I think a goal should be to survey ourselves, you know, how can we, you know, what are we doing that we can do a better job? You can read the newspaper, I guess, if you wanna know what some people think, but.
I'm fine with that.
I think that's a good idea.
Okay.
Cause I, my, my belief is that we need to get on, ultimately, we need to get on to a, a rotating cycle of feedback on our departments. Like, you know, every three or four, that, that's what I personally would like to see where, um, and a department is about, like, the police department takes that pulse. I, I kinda, I, I mean, I'm not totally enamored with some of the questions that they ask in those surveys, but I think it's a good mechanism. But we should, we should be doing that on all of our departments. Parks and Rec did a survey a year or two ago and got some good valuable information. We should be doing the same for administration and others, but if it's on a rotating basis, and then you have a benchmark and you can say, okay, our level of service in the community, they evaluated us at this, three years later, we're here, you know, why did it go up or down? And you can start talking about some of those things, but we really don't, we really don't have any type of, and we did this, you recall when John Caprio was on the board, we talked about performance metrics, but we never really instituted it. And I think there are some good tools out and, you know, certain web tools that are very easy, albeit I know that everybody has the internet, but I'd rather do something as opposed to nothing. Even if we're gonna use it anec, you know, just, you know, anecdotally, something's better than nothing.
Okay. Anybody else?
I just wanted to touch on seven on budget preparation for twenty twelve. I agree with A and B. I didn't, I just, I just thought maybe there could be an addition with the articles and that we tend to be at the articles later in the year. And sometimes I wonder if it gives us enough time to get a message, if we wanna get any certain articles out. And maybe we should talk, I would like to talk earlier about certain art, you know, articles that we may or may not support as a board or, or produce.
Many times the articles are an outgrowth of the budget process, you know, things that didn't survive in CIP, do we put them on as a separate or a special article?
But there might be some that don't fall in that category, just to know if we wanna talk about certain articles prior to, just, just throwing it out there.
And then maybe if we find the time, uh, we've talked about doing a, a road committee to look at our roads and see what, if there's any that should be discontinued.
Right, I mean.
That would be an early discussion.
Solid waste truck, I mean, that, if that's gonna be up again, or is that gonna go into our budget as a CIP item? I mean, I heard it broke down again, uh, that's what I'm told. So, you know, that, that could be one, and if it is, then we will, we'll be, you know, either it's gonna go into the CIP in terms of budget or it's gonna be separate, but it's gonna, gonna be somewhere. That, that truck needs to get replaced and that's not going away.
Right.
So any appropriation articles that are separate or special, we have to decide by the second Tuesday in January. So when, how soon would you, yeah, how soon would you wanna have that discussion? Before that, just to put it in a timeline perspective.
We, when do we, as far as meeting with the budget committee chair to discuss the twenty twelve budget, what time, what, what date are we looking for that? Are we looking for around October, September?
Um, Scott was gonna check if they go late later. They were October twenty-second and we were talking if we waited another week, we could have real health insurance numbers, but I don't know. I don't think you've met since.
They did.
You did go there.
We, well, we met, but I don't, they didn't wanna go there.
No.
No, they wanted to stay true to it, but I, I, I'll find out. So you, you're saying that you wanna.
If you could go like to October twenty-ninth, uh, for that, we, we could have real numbers plugged into the budget.
I mean, so November would, I'm thinking, would November be fine?
Yep. So do you wanna have the discussion after we present the budget to the budget committee or when they conclude? Because usually we wait for them to conclude to decide the appropriation articles. I mean, if there's other things that are non-appropriation articles, we can have an early discussion on non-appropriation articles.
Then I'd like to break into those two portions, those of not, non-appropriation, because I don't know how long it's gonna sit with budget committee. That could be a short process or it could be a longer process, but non-appropriation, we should be able to talk to in November.
You can, yeah.
In case we wanna have these conversations, conversations earlier and, cause when we start getting in towards January and December and January, the, the clock just flies.
I'm, I'm also the believer that this process is what this process is and you can, you could, you could start it in March, right after the town vote and it would change dramatically when you get to the deadline, you know?
I'm just trying to.
Yeah, no, I, I just, I've, I've tried to streamline it as best you can, but then you get petition warrant articles that just totally change the dynamic, you know, you know, things improve or things decline and it's, it's, it's so dynamic, this process, it's not even funny. So.
Okay. Nick, did you have any?
Well, we.
All the comments?
Not on this, but are we gonna also discuss department goals or is that part of this?
Well, I, unless, uh, uh, I didn't know, the reason why I suggested that we have that to see if there was any way that they tied in with our goals. But I mean, that could be a separate, if it didn't.
I'm also with these.
Okay, so with those couple of changes, we'll be okay? All right. Okay, so.
The other old business item that I didn't put in here, but we need to review is the Glen Lake ordinance, because I wanna put it on the website, because we've put the public hearings are gonna be May third and twice after that, twenty-third? Yeah. So those are gonna be, the, the public hearing went in and was published in the Union Leader last Friday. But I wanna put the ordinance and I know you wanted to, an opportunity to review Attorney Drescher's, um, uh, opinion on the ordinance and how it was incorporated into that draft. Is that draft okay to go?
That the one that we just got?
Yeah, it was, it's the same one that was in your packet last week.
Oh, okay, there's no change?
No change. I think there were punctuation changes that was there. But we had incorporated his comments into that, um, draft that you had last week and you've got again this week, because I didn't know if you'd bring your packets from last week tonight.
Okay.
I, I, Mr. Chair, I feel it's adequate to go forward with posting it and then that'll be the basis for public comment.
Cause we can change it after our public.
Based on public comment, you can make adjustments, correct.
Right, okay.
Okay, we'll post it on the website then.
All right, and, but Nick, you wanted to know about the department codes. What'd you wanna do, you wanted to review those?
If that was, I didn't know whether we were going to, because I did come up with some goals with Chief O'Brien for the fire department. And I didn't know whether that's what you were referring to.
No, but it might be a good idea, uh, that we can just, um, share those so that other people know, because I don't think everybody knows what the police department goals or administration goals are, so as far as that and then see how that fits in or if there's a conflict with something there and something that we have in our goals. If that's something you wanna do tonight or if you wanted to put that off till next week, because everybody may not be prepared.
That's fine.
So.
Schedule it for next week.
Will you be prepared next week?
I have several DPW goals that, for this board to consider and.
I mean, we could have the discussion now if you wanted to.
I'd like to.
I just didn't know whether or not everybody was.
I'll be prepared next week. So right now, I just have the titles of the goals. I don't, nothing to talk to and that's what I need to develop.
Okay. All right.
So I'll put that under new business next week, department goals?
Yeah, why don't you put it under new business then, all right? I'll just.
You wanna do department and committee goals or just department goals?
I think you can do both. I just, that's just.
Yeah, yeah, I could, we, we could, but the, the.
Cause are we gonna have an all-boards meeting where they do present the, um?
Well, that's where I.
Their goals?
We could, we could have that discussion, but I think that we should focus on the, on the department.
Okay.
So that we can have that discussion and if somebody's aware of what some of the other goals are, you might just want to mention that. Just that everybody's, we're all on the same page. Okay? So, would that be it on the whole business?
All right.
Committee reports then?
I'm going to have a new to report.
Okay. EDC?
We met on Tuesday, the elected officials, Ald, Aldous was the chairman and Steve Langley is the vice chair. Carol Huxell met us and she, she came down and pretty much was trying to promote an internet blog and just to get our thought on it. It's ki- and she gave some examples where there are, I forget what, I apologize what town. I believe it was Dairy and some surrounding communities where they use one called the forum. And since you, it's just a blog where you have classifieds, you have people who would put, you know, they could just, they could just put their thoughts regarding how, on any different, on a different department or, or people going on, but it would be filtered through hers, so they're going to kind of take a peek at that. He spoke a lot about seventy nine E and part of that was from the question that came from the board is how we would implement that. In other words, would he go through a process where we would, where it would go through EDC and they would recommend, you know, give a recommendation one way or other, then it would come here to the board. And I, and I think part of the process with that is that from a, from a community and we're looking at, we were looking at it and it, we, uh, the con- the consent was that it should just come directly to the board. In other words, going, meaning, having it go through EDC by the time, you know, the, the, the application would go in and maybe by the time, um, uh, EDC meets and then by the time it gets to you, that the process would be too stretched out, in other words, just too many touches, so. So, the, you guys are seventy nine E, as far as the EDC looks at it, is that their job has been completed with the idea of the article there and they're going to go towards the part of trying to promote EDC and we're talking about mailers to those, to those businesses that are affected in those districts. But as far as if someone was to come, come forward and apply, then it would just come directly to the board.
When we talk about goal development, I often wonder, I, I hear this a lot from people in Goffstown. Why aren't we being more aggressive in terms of hiring someone to, as a job, to bring in business and, and serve as an economic development person? And we, we do it in a kind of a part-time capacity and why don't we, why don't we do that? And I know that the topic has come up when I served on as the representative to EDC and that's a, that's a position. And it's, and that's something that I think we need to have some conversation about, because oftentimes the last three years, because of our budget situation, we've said, you know, we, we can't possibly bring on someone. But the more and more that people are talking to me, they're like, yeah, that's, that's all the more reason why you should be spending money. It's an investment, you know, to, to lure and attract business and to talk to current business owners about seventy nine E, start working some deals. We, how can we expect to do it with people who are literally part-time EDC folks? Who do this volunteer work and they meet once a month for like two to three hours. How is it, how are you going to get anything done? And that's not, that's to diminish what they do perhaps on the, when they're not meeting, but this, this involves a lot of legwork. And should we consider trying to create a position, a paid position in our budget and craft it where maybe they can get paid extra monies if they bring in, you know, bring in development or bonus or something. But if we're going to take this thing seriously, can we, can we still use the same playbook that we've been doing forever? Just a thought, because what we've, really what we've done is we've created, for budgetary reasons, we have two folks that kind of do, wear two different hats, you know, in our in-town hall. I don't know, has that, has that been discussed more lately on EDC? As I know, it was when I was on it.
We talked about it, um, at the last minute a little bit and I did get a chance, it's funny you should say that, to speak with Derek the other night about it, because, you know, we did talk about the goals for EDC for this year and, and they're all, they're all good goals, but when you, but when you, you know, and obviously some of it was promote the website, promote seventy nine E and, but, and I, I'm going to go to what Scott's saying is that I, I sit there sometimes and, and I say to myself, you know, there are some very, there's some very educated people there, there's some people with some great contacts, but how it works in the, you know, in, in the larger scale and how, in other words, how much resources are you dedicating towards it as far as, you know, as far as staffing, staffing time and if we're, and, and as Scott suggests, if, if we're really serious about this, you know, are, are we giving that type of effort to it? And of course, the other thing we spoke a little about, what I mentioned, is that when you go forward with these things, everyone's looking for a return on that investment. In other words, if we staff and we put someone full there, how would you, you know, how would you measure it and go, you know, how would, how would you measure that production and where it comes, so. But we don't seem to go down that road, because right now it's a part-time position. I don't want to say part-time, but it's.
Well, it is. I mean, it's a split position.
It's a split hat.
Difficult hat to wear.
Yeah, yeah.
So, on one, on one part, you know, you're, you know, you might be going to an HDC meeting and then the next thing, you're dealing with a cable contract and then the next thing, you're trying to bring in, talk to, uh, somebody who's trying to bring in a business or actually go out and be aggressive and solicit the stuff or come up with creative ideas.
Let me ask you this question. In today's world and in today's economy, what employee is not multitasking?
Can I, can I jump to that a little bit? And it's not the idea that everyone's multitasking. I'm just, I'm just talking, maybe we're not applying the right skill sets and I'll take, for example, I, I think Derek's is a smart guy, I think he's a great guy. And yet, when we talk about updating the website, et cetera, that's one of his tasks that's in there. Can his time be better allocated for, you know, for, in other words, with some of his skill sets, should he be able to delegate that out? So, it might not just be the idea of finding someone just to do economic development, but maybe the person who's doing that, he can shift some of his tasks that, to, that are probably at a different level than what, than what needs to be and maybe we could free up time that way.
I think we ought to be creative on all these things and, and you can create some part-time jobs where you now have to pay benefits. Where you can give somebody a ten to twenty hours a week where it could be updating a website, which is, you know, and then use someone of Derek's ability to do some other things. And I say that for some other, other, you know, key personnel that we have.
And that was one of the things that, it's funny you said that, because that's what I spoke to him about also, was just that whole idea of, if, you know, if we have to, if updating this website, if we find that there's value in that and it promotes business and it's a place for, for business within our town to communicate, if we're going to update on a regular basis, maybe we need to give someone, you know, a handful of hours a month to do it. I mean, then I think we, you know, we might look at that and say that, that's a good return on our investment. But to have, you know, but like I say, like, to have Derek do it, I don't know. I think, I think his skill sets are much, you know, are much better used somewhere else.
Or, you know, another possibility is, you know, are there opportunities to hire someone part-time or con- contractual to do it? Where they would get, you know, they would, you would just simply contract with them for X amount of hours to do economic development activity with actionable goals. Or secondly, is there a way to have, partner with another community to do something similarly? I don't, it just seems like this is an opportunity for us, as other communities are starting to build out, that are around us. This is an opportunity now where I think we might have to make that investment. We, I think we've done a pretty good job on the grant writing side and people said, oh, you know, we need a grant writer and I, I was one of them. And it'd be great if we had the money for that, but we, our department heads have secured some pretty good grants over the last three or four years, albeit the tower truck, the commu- you know, rate, police and fire communications and, you know, I'm, I'm sure we've ri- and then all the Lynchville, you know, the stag grants and this, we've probably leveraged two, three, four million dollars in grants in the last few years. So, I think we're, we've been pretty good, but.
Let's put some luck when Pierce on that grant writing piece there.
Rail trail, right, I'm just, but in terms of actually going out, marketing Goffstown as a place to do business, marketing Goffstown or local business owners who, to take advantage of seventy nine E, that takes a, that takes a little bit more time, more aggressiveness, a different, a different direction, which, and then we tell somebody else, oh, yeah, we want you to do that, but then again, I, I also want you to, uh, attend the HDC meeting, go to the cable committee meeting and these are all like, they're just different, they're just different tasks. Like, one, one is keeping you in the office and the other one, you need to go out of the office, kind of, you know, it's, you're, it's conflicting, I think. It was my opinion. And sometimes you got to spend money to make money. And I hear that a lot from people. So, I'm just throwing it out.
Are you suggesting that we look, as we develop the budget, to create a new position for economic development?
I do, part-time or contractual or something, yeah, with actionable goals. And, and, and ask EDC to, to spearhead, what, what is this position going to look like? What can we get for a part-time or, or contractual type person? What can we expect? What can we ask of this person to do and how can we measure it that, that we're being, you know, successful? Because right now, I just don't see it. I don't know, had a whole lot of economic development activity. I mean, I'm not trying to be overly critical of EDC, they job on the website, but that's a tool, that's not a, the website is what the website is. We're just, we got ev- we got everything that everybody else has now, but in terms of now, you have to bring, you have to have conversations, you have to talk. It's a, that's a, it's a different world.
And the Goffstown Industrial Corp has been active in that regard.
Really?
Reaching out, yeah.
I, I don't know, hasn't, you were on it, has it really been?
Well, they're working on two.
Working on brownfields over there on one fourteen.
We've been working on that for like three years.
They paid for.
Working on it and other projects for, for years trying to get it. The problem you run into, Scott, the problem is you, you get, you get an industrial park over there that you have to bring water and sewer.
Right.
Okay, so now you look at that and you look at the lots and you look at the costs of bringing that in. And then when you calculate, you do, you run the numbers and you look at the cost.
It's not worth it then.
You look at Manchester back then, for forty thousand dollars, a person got a lot that had all the re- all the, they were all the approvals, had water and sewer ready to go. You just go in, you fill out your application, bingo, and you're in. And over here, you're looking at a hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
Uh, I'm, I'm going to echo what you're saying. I, I think right now, our problem is greater than an economic development person. Areas that we have available for commercial or industrial lack infrastructure. Areas that have the potential infrastructure or have been designated, lack the ability to get trucks.
That's right, because they're blocked by another community.
To that. We have a lot of wetlands, we have a lot of granite, we have, so I think we have hurdles that we need to get over before. I mean, we could have an economic developer that will have maybe a storefront here when it's vacant, somebody else move in. But it's not going to really generate what we need.
New development.
One, to sustain that position, but also bring in a significant additional revenue.
And to build on that, we have the site that's over by the Shell station, that we have the new medical facility in. Okay, we have, there are a couple of lots there, those are privately owned. I mean, the owners of that are trying to market those properties and they have, they, they have the issues too. So, next point is, is well taken.
And i- if it's an infrastructure issue, and we've talked about the TIF and other ways to try to bring infrastructure there, that's where we have to focus our enter- that, then that needs to be a goal. And not just a planning board working solo, trying to explain what a TIF district is, but maybe that's where the Board of Selectmen, EDC, planning, zoning, everybody is in an all-boards meeting saying, we got to get behind this now. Not waiting until November and then people like, what's a TIF? You know?
That's my point of.
If that's, if this is so, if this is important, which I believe, Nick, you're correct, then we have to start to lay out a plan saying, okay, how do we get the infrastructure where it is and how do we get, how do we pay for that infrastructure? TIF is one mechanism to do it.
If I may, and just to go back to that, that whole project, the, the TIF project, in my opinion, was inherently flawed to begin with, even without the discussion of people understanding what a TIF was. The premise of that project was to create a parallel road behind Mast Road with access to those lots. However, it was done on a piecemeal basis and only when a lot was developed. So, if in fifteen years, fifteen lots weren't developed, there's no road.
Right, the other approach though is, is the, you know, if you build it, they will come approach.
Exactly.
Which we didn't, which the road that we did not go down, no pun intended. And that, to me, is the approach that we should now consider, because there, th- there is less risk for someone to develop something that they know that the road is already there. But that, that, that costs more money, correct?
Road and infrastructure, right.
Oh, yes, you're doing, but that's what a lot of other communities are doing. I mean, they're, they are, they're going before their voters, asking for that bonding authority and, and doing that simply and they're, and with, with the hope that once they build the infrastructure, there will be folks coming by. But that's, that's where I think, this is one of probably the most important goal and is to work with planning and zoning. So, if we did something like that, and I've talked to a few, a few folks about this too, you can't have the back of the building facing Mast Road. You cannot have sign restrictions where if you're going to plop down three to five million dollars on a building with parking and, you know, all that stuff, that you don't get any visibility from Mast Road, which is, which has what, twenty thousand cars that goes, goes by it every day. And that's where we have to work with planning and zoning to say, okay, if we do this, it's fine to have a, a parallel road, but it's the parallel road that goes in the back of the store, but there's, but there's signage and, but right now, if I'm not mistaken, do we not have like no cut zones and, right, with trees, so you can't even, right, and there's, we, and there was, I don't know, I, I hope I'm not speaking, you know, with conjecture. I, I, I've heard that we've got some pretty strenuous limitations. Am I wrong? Or maybe, maybe I need to take clarification from, you guys have been in planning, but a parallel road, are there like no cut zones on, for trees on Mast Road? No? But the parallel road, I could have sworn, wasn't there a plan that came before planning and there was some suggestion, oh, let's put the back of the building here and we, and we don't, we can't put a sign, am I off on that or?
I think there was a proposed project that they had talked about not wanting.
Well, okay, let's, let's just assume for the sake of argument that that was history and, but let's just assume that that was inaccurate. But maybe that's why we do need an all-boards meeting to say, listen, let's try, let's not try to speak in these vague terms, let's, let's be very specific. The corridor that we want to develop is along Mast Road and it's this, and it's behind the Shell station. Let's work on this, this only. How can, how can all of our boards get together and, and agree on a plan and promote it together? That should be a goal, because that is an area.
Sounds like a great topic for the all-boards meeting.
Right, it does.
And we can whine and cry all we want about the industrial park that's on the back road, because Manchester won't let us. And maybe we can try to have some conversations with the mayor and the new alderman that's there, but the reality of it is, let's control our own destiny. Let's, let's pick that strip and let's see if we can make it work.
All-boards meeting. Uh, Steve, you wanted?
Just, just a couple of thoughts. Um, a couple of things, you know, um, one can argue, you know, when you, when you were talking about the TIF, should we, should it be built first or come after? But I still look at it as an idea, and I'm not just talking to Ted, it's just any of this development, you need someone to navigate through it. And when you wear several hats at different times, a lot of times, and most people's jobs is that you're putting out the fires. In other words, you're reactive and not being proactive to what's coming on. And I think, you know, and I'm not saying it has to be a full-time position or maybe we, I mean, we take, you know, we, 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 we do assist, assistance or support to help that person, but it's, it's not, we don't, if, if someone was to ask me, who's that dedicated person who's going to, to look at all the different entities and bring them together? I don't, I, I don't feel confident to say we have that one person that does it full-time and has enough time to get that job done.
I'm on, I gotta go, I'm on a roll here, but I, this is like mowing the lawn, as far as I'm concerned. I mean, if you make a certain amount of money, the time that it takes you to mow the lawn, if you, you could be spent making more money doing something else. Therefore, therefore, people hire someone to mow their lawn, okay? And I, and I think we have individuals that could be spending their time doing much bigger and better things, but they do have obligations, whether it be other committees or other things that they have to do, that requires them to take this, that, that amount of time. And that's where I think we have to have a dialogue with our, you know, you know, folks like Derek and, and Sue and others, say, okay, what are some of these things that we can maybe take off your plate that really maybe someone who is paid less can do? And then you focus in. And then you focus in on some of the higher-end stuff." Quite frankly, I think we do the same thing. And again, no disrespect to some of the committees that we go to every month, but is it as important for us to go to a library trustee meeting every single month, per se, when there's already a group of trustees who are duly elected? When maybe we should be focusing on these bigger issues and trying to promote business? We have a Parks and Rec Commission, which we've appointed, and I mean, do we need to attend every single meeting? I mean, it's important to check in on them, you know, hey, what's going on, how can we help? But I just don't, even how our time is spent, should we focus? Should we prioritize the things that are more impactful? Budgets, we supposed to spend six months on budgets. Six months we spend on budgets, trying to go back and forth and back and forth. Is that really the best use of time? I don't know. Just trying to... We say, have this conversation every year.
Yep.
We probably have for twenty years.
I don't understand, it's over thirty, but...
It's over thirty, okay.
Nick?
Well, I have two comments, but I'll leave the other one on RSA seventy-nine-E. But I guess what I'm struggling, because of the comments Scott that you just made, trying to figure out the reality of that. Or, we don't go, let's assume we don't go to our committee meetings, do, do we have an extra meeting on a Thursday night to deal with economic development? Do we individually go off and do economic development? How do, how do you practically put that? Because I think if you, if we look up the job description for the selectmen, I don't, there may be an economic development component in there, but I think our charge is the prudential affairs of the town. And I don't think we should pass policies or do anything to hinder. We should try to be development-minded, but I don't, I don't see or understand, where's that vehicle? How do we, in reality, do what you're saying?
I think a lot of what I'm talking about is, is working on the relationships and having the conversation with the others in our town that have a direct impact on that, such as planning, such as, you know, potentially zoning. And to give that kind of clear direction to work that out, it takes a lot of time. I mean, we had a great all-boards meeting a year or so ago, and we talked about all these things, but we did not follow up on it. We did not stay true to it, we didn't have follow-up meetings, I'll take some of the heat on that. And I, I think that's where I'm going with, I, I think we would be better served having all of our boards get together, talk about some actionable things that we can do, and, and let's hold true to that. Meaning that let's meet with those people quarterly, not, not a year and a half later, and stay true to that plan. If that means that we miss another meeting to make sure that we're on track, that we're holding a staff person accountable to make sure that they're executing that plan, and I think that's where we fall short, just my opinion. But not actually us trying to go and drum up business with a developer from, you know, Manchester to come and build a restaurant here. I mean, can that happen, it's possible, but that's not really our charge, you know, and we all know that.
What, what, you have to be careful on something like that, because what could happen with that? At all good intentions, okay? There's a perception that if the selectmen or a person is bringing a developer in to develop a business, you, you just have to be careful because perceptions, there's, could be a perception there that there's a financial gain for the person who's bringing that person, and that's why that person is pushing it.
And that's why, that's why I don't think it's our job to do that per se. But could we be the one who facilitates and coordinates it? So, could we have conversations with planning saying, "Okay, can we identify certain areas in the town that", and working with conservation, this is, this is, these are good areas to develop, which we already know, okay? What's our plan to do this? Well, what are our obstacles? So, you're almost doing like a SWOT analysis, you know, what are our strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats? Can we overcome some of these things? What, like Nick mentioned, infrastructure, okay, how do we overcome the infrastructure obstacle? Well, this is one way of doing that. Can we ask planning, which I think that they're working on as we speak, they're, they're talking about trying to streamline the whole application process, technical review, and, and I guess revamp things. If that's the case, that's a great thing to do. How can we make it easier? Do we have any wacky ordinances or anything that prohibits or stifles it? That's the type of stuff that I think we could do collectively, and just make sure that we hold true to that.
I would just say an example of that may be working with the sewer commission. Because they have plans going on into the future to extend sewer lines. Do those goals align with our economic development goals? And maybe having meetings with them, well, to see if they do.
And water too.
And the same with water. And I'll jump on that one, because, and again, I'm sure I'll probably get phone calls tomorrow after saying this, but there's a very steady Eddie approach to the water precincts and bringing the water, replacing mains X amount of hundred feet every year. However, as we saw, you know, recently with this fire, I mean, you gotta, you gotta loop your, your water system hopefully, we have to get a better infrastructure. And I don't think that we're gonna be able to do that as a town under the current way that we're doing it and the increments in which we're doing it. And again, the water precinct only has so much money to, to do, to do upgrades. Everybody knows that, they can't triple their rates and then try to expand it on the backs of their rate, ratepayers. But what is another mechanism in which we could expedite that? I don't know if there is another one, you know? But that's another thing, I mean, how, if water and sewer are, are key issues, but yet our water precincts and our sewer commission have limited capacity to increase their infrastructure, to improve infrastructure or to expand it, then we, we're gonna be banging our heads into the wall, because no developer, like you said, if you, if you have a chance to go to Manchester and everything is on-site, where you're gonna come here where there's nothing on-site and it's gonna cost you hundreds of thousands or millions to get water and sewer, you walk. But if we can somehow help assist in that process, and I don't even know if we can do that legally, I don't think we can.
Well, we can't, we can't reduce the persons' taxes, we can't do that. We had that discussion once, oh, several years ago, and constitutionally, you can't do it.
Right, and I'm saying, and we do not have the ability to, to assist the water precincts in, in expanding their, right, their, their water systems, right? We can't.
You, you can buy it.
You can buy it, but then there's liabilities associated with that as well, that the town then...
Typically, water and sewer expands as developers' needs come about, and they pay for that expansion to bring it. But what we're saying is, if you're gonna run a road parallel to Mast Road, you're not gonna get, you're gonna have to line up your developers, like before you build a mall, you get anchor stores. You're gonna have to line up enough so that you're gonna realize the tax revenue from it before you even go down that road.
Well, it's kinda like how Rite Aid was the anchor.
Right.
On, on that section, I mean, the sewer commission is upgrading all those...
The pipes in...
In Pennardville.
Yeah.
And part of that is just to be able to meet the future needs, because right now, they're at their capacity. They can't, they can't expand to any, they can't provide for any, if somebody did wanna bring a business...
But the problem is, in that area, it's pretty much built out, for the most part.
Depends on where you expand from that area. But the way it was right now, they were at the, at the, basically maxed out. And that's why they came and they asked us about capacity. When they did come and they just asked us that question. So, what did we solve?
If I may, I just had one other, that other item on RSA seventy-nine-E. When we originally discussed this and we went forward with the Warren article, one of the things that I had asked at the time is, or requested of this board, is to develop
A process.
A process. Because all of those requests are going to come here.
Has the EDC worked on that?
No, they assigned it to Derek to do, Derek's gonna be before the board with the outline process and criteria.
Because part of that was, the conversation was that, that that process, you know, does, does it go like, does it go to EDC? And they put a recommendation kind of note to it, and then it comes here. And so, at this point, it's gonna bypass the EDC though, and then it'll come, it'll come directly to the board. And like you said, Derek will come here and present to that. But I'm just gonna jump in just for one last second to our last conversation, you know, when you say, "Well, what have, what have we done?" And, and, you know, I sit here and we have these conversations, these philosophical conversations, and sometimes, you know, you're looking for that enactment of what, what, what's gonna happen. And, and you're talking about economic development and how do, how do you create an environment that, 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 that supports it? But when we talk about these things, I never, you know, I'm looking, for us as a board, is that, well, if we're saying we'd like to support that environment, what resources are we putting to it? And I don't, in the last two years I've been here, I don't know of any increase in resources that we've put towards it. That's just, and that's just the thought that I have coming into this year, this year's budget. And that also goes back to a little bit, we talked about the TIF, I said, "Jeez, let's get on", you know, there's some articles that I'd like to speak to, you know, earlier or later, and maybe that, maybe that's one of them, I don't know. I was saying, but it's, it's a matter of freeing up time, creating an environment and putting the resources where, if we're gonna talk about it, let's do something on it. If we're not going to, then we should, well, I mean, I don't think we're doing the right thing, but that's, I'd like to see us go forward with that.
I just wanna go back to the, just to clarify what I meant by seventy-nine-E. I wasn't referring to a procedure whereas the individual requesting it goes to EDC, and then EDC goes to someone else.
Our guidelines.
Actual criteria, so that...
Yeah, that's what he's gonna be doing.
Okay, good. So, business owner A, after it's all said and done, can say he was treated exactly the same way as building owner B.
And the reality is that you're not, you won't have that. You won't have that. Part of this is that it's going to be built up, that you will be looking at some, and you might say, "I'm gonna go three years, I'm gonna go five years", and it's gonna be flexibility, but there's some basic guidelines.
They wanna, what his concern is...
Score the project using pre-established criteria, that's all.
Exactly.
Exactly.
And there might be one criteria that may apply to one, but it doesn't apply to another.
Right, maybe a...
So, someone ranks zero and one at the same criteria, but you're using the same criteria.
Right, maybe a housing project versus a commercial project, which would be different.
And your volume, to be honest with you, it doesn't, I mean...
Not many.
Not many. I mean, you know, I mean, I, I think you're having too...
You wanna be ready when they come.
I'm gonna be, you know, that probably won't happen.
And Derek was gonna come in in May when he got the leases back that they're going over, to finalize those and do that at the same time.
Okay, that's economic development. HDC did meet, project construction has, has started, things are moving along fairly well. And that's about it with HDC, you have any questions?
You didn't mention the highlight of the evening.
What was that?
The highlight, I figured I'd leave that to you.
The highlight of the evening was that Phil unfurled the backdrops from Grassmere.
Oh, the canvas?
The canvas, and there was what, a total of four or five of them?
Yeah, but some of them we didn't unroll.
We didn't unroll. There's a couple that are in rough shape, there's three that are in decent, uh, two that are in decent shape, and one that is in really good shape. One of the ideas that we had for the two-fiftieth was to take one of the backdrops and, and display it at the gala ball, which we're working on doing.
I can't, I'm sorry, backdrop?
There, it's a, for a theater, for a stage.
I mean, from the grass...
They're sixteen by ten, they're ten feet high, sixteen feet wide.
What do they, what do they look like?
They're hand-painted.
Hand-painted canvas, street scene.
Thank you, that's what I'm looking for.
That was one of them, another one was a house.
An entrance.
An entrance to a home or something, but these were done over a hundred years ago?
Yeah, but, yeah, they're, they appear to be, I assume they're hand-painted though.
Yeah, they're definitely hand-painted. So, that was one of the reasons why, you know, we wanted to see what condition they were in, this is, this is gonna be a need.
I did take some photographs.
Yeah, this is a need.
How carefully can we, I mean, you'll have to carefully transport that and display it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, we're gonna have to build a frame for the, for the backdrop. And then transport it in a box truck or something. It's beautiful.
You can't, you can't stick it out the window of the pickup truck, the back window.
I've only seen them rolled up, I haven't seen them unrolled.
Ten by sixteen, they, they roll up sixteen feet.
There's only one that we were, that we would use for that. It's beautiful though, really is nice. And then the thought process that people would be able, we're having a photographer there, that the photographer would take pictures of, of people in front of the...
Is there a way of creating a frame that you could temporarily apply a patch of TIF?
That's what we're gonna be talking to you about next, because you're a carpenter and...
Build the frame wherever you need it, and then just bring the...
Yeah, I haven't talked to you yet, but I'm gonna buy the materials and I'll, I'll talk to you.
Another project.
And Scott's gonna build a little wooden people in front, where you put your head through the hole, so you can have your picture in front, and you'll be impressed with the scenes.
You didn't tell him?
You didn't tell him?
We're enjoying that too.
For a dollar, you can get your picture in front of the...
Well, I haven't finalized it yet, because my, my wife is working on it. But we have this image of a, of a Gossstown baseball team from like nineteen oh eight or something, or I think it's something like that, it's, it's early nineteen hundreds, and it's really a great picture. And so, the thought process was, is that we're trying to see if we can get that enlarged, and then, you know, have, maybe have it at the Little League field or at, at the block party, where people can stick, kids can stick their heads in and take a picture. So, that's what we're working on, but it's a, it's a great photo.
Had a lot of time into this.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything more for the two-fiftieth?
No, it was, it was fun time, though.
Okay, Conservation Commission.
Conservation Commission met last week. There was a public discussion with a property owner regarding a conditional use permit for a twelve-by-twenty shed and thirty-by-thirty knit pack area within the hundred-foot wetlands surface district. And the commission voted unanimously, unanimously to recommend to the planning board to grant the conditional use permit as they had no issues or concerns. We have a presentation from two Eagle Scouts.
I have a question.
Yes.
Nick, would you happen to know how much it costs to get an evaluation report like that?
An evaluation report?
This says here that the commission reviewed the proposed plans of the shed and the wetlands evaluation report prepared by Eric C. Mitchell and Associates. I'm just curious what it costs.
I do not know.
Could you, just, can we find out what's a ballpark to have somebody do?
It's in, it's in planning, because that came to the planning. Brian Rose has copies of it, it's from Eric Mitchell. Oh, I don't know, but it's from Eric Mitchell.
No, I'm just, I guess...
Did the homeowner pay for that?
Of course, that's my point, I'm just trying to find out, like, you know, how much does it cost a homeowner to put up a shed? Obviously, it's the cost of the shed, but then you have to, you have to get somebody to determine, you know, what disturbance this might be, et cetera, and what's the cost of that? Because, I mean, you could be putting up a ten-by-ten shed potentially, but you still have to go through that same evaluation report. It may cost you more for the report than it does for the shed.
Just, just keep in perspective that the requirements for that rest in planning.
Right.
You know, it was, it was the zoning ordinance, this hundred-foot wetland setback that requires that. Conservation is only serving as a review board.
Review.
Or a review, review commission, they're not the ones that are requiring that. But I will...
Yeah.
Check to see if I can find that out. There was a presentation by two Eagle Scout projects, which we will most likely see as well, requesting permission. Both of them are proposed to take place behind Parks and Rec. The creation, one project is the creation of a picnic area, and the second is the creation of wooden steps going from that picnic area down to the paved parking area. The, again, another requirement that's outside of the scope of the town, these two projects could potentially be impacted by the shoreline protection. Collis Adams volunteered to work with both of the scouts to navigate through that.
You just gotta like measure the diameter of trees in that thing, right? Wasn't that part of that wetland shoreline thing?
Exactly, you have to, you have to divide the area into grids, and you have to measure, they have points, and you can only remove so many points. But I think recollection, I think the second one, the stairs may or may not be impacted by a, or require a permit. It depends on, it does?
It does not.
It does not?
That's what I heard the commission speak to.
Yeah, but I think Collis was going to work with both of them to, one, determine what their needs were, and then help them navigate through that. And then there were some other items, correspondence. The rest of the meeting, we, was basically a discussion on the board's actions. The chair, chairman, Kimberly Pease, who at the end of the meeting did step down from the... The chair, chairman, Kimberly Pease, who, um, at the end of the meeting did step down from the, the commission, discussed the letter that she sent to the board, apologized for the use of the word "we." She confirmed that there was no meeting with any other, um, members. It was basically her letter to the board, and she should not have used that tense. It should have been "I" or "her." We did, however, discuss past procedures. This board acts on their recommendation and appoints active members, voting members, as well as alternates. Historically, because of the technical nature of the Conservation Commission, where they're going out and they're looking at wetlands and, vegetation, wildlife, traditionally, the alternates have been, after a year or two of being on the commission, recommended to fill a vacant active voting member's position versus an individual with, without any experience on the commission being voted into a voting position. So there was some request for guidance from this board as to if that historical procedure will be upheld. I had a question. They didn't act on the volunteers', um, the volunteer application because the period hadn't closed yet. And have we received any additional applications?
Someone stopped by when you were out and picked up an application, um, but I haven't seen it returned yet.
For conservation?
Yes.
So they were going to wait?
No.
No, he's not going to.
Oh, okay.
They were going to wait until the?
I told him it was a three-year commitment, and he was only interested in one year.
Oh.
In any event, they were gonna wait until that period closed, which I believe is next week?
Uh, that depends on the board. It was a week this past Wednesday that it was posted. We usually leave it up for two to three weeks.
And, and then the other, again, the other thing, just as a reminder to the board, and we discussed it earlier, town administrator brought it up in, in her report, is that there has not been any correspondence with the two individuals that were not reappointed as to why, reason. I understand we've heard balance. Not, I'll be, speak personally, I'm not quite sure what that balance means, since they're really, they have a very narrow charge. So I guess during our discussion, I had suggested, and I believe the board, the commission is going to request to have an actual appointment with this board on the agenda versus a public comment type thing, um, so that they can discuss the direction that this board is looking for, what some of the, um, the changes, if, if you will. There are two very hardworking members of that commission that did almost a big majority of the sidewalks, reviewed dredge and fill permits, and those two people are no longer on the, the commission, so unfortunately, you may s- see sidewalks canceled, because unfortunately, that, those were the individuals that had the most time, put in the most time, the most expertise, experience, and they're no longer on the commission. Personally, I think one of the individuals that has no longer been appointed probably should have gotten a volunteer award because of her dedication and the years of service versus being told, or not even being told, just not even having her reappointment seconded without a reason.
Now, Nick, is it, you're understanding that both of these individuals have, have they resigned?
Both, I believe, have sent communication to the town, um, saying that they are no longer, um, on the commission, but I think that is a result of basically not hearing anything from this board, and recognizing that this board no longer wants them on the commission. We basically said to them, you're free to serve until we get somebody else to fill your position. And, and I don't think either of them are willing, you know, they're, they're looking at, okay, if I'm not on the commission anymore, what is it that I'm going to do? I would, not to, to put words in your mouth, but I think if there was a, um, a feeling for this board to potentially revisit that, they, they could, I won't, I don't wanna speak for them, um, they could potentially be interested in returning to the commission.
Well, I, I guess, I'm, this is very cryptic in terms of things that I've read. Either did they resign or didn't they resign?
At six A, you see their emails.
Right, and I can't figure them out.
If I may, I'll, I'll read this one from Evelyn Miller. My, my three-year appointed term with the Conservation Commission has ended. I submitted an application for reappointment to the selectman one month ago. I have not had the courtesy of a response. I am assuming the selectmen no longer want my volunteer services, therefore I have made other commitments. So she is no longer on the commission. And I believe as I, at the end of the meeting, Kimberly stepped down, and our first impression was that she was stepping down from the chair position. But then she then clarified to say that she was stepping down from the commission. So currently, there are three vacant positions, two voting members and one alternate, uh, because we did, there was a resignation. Kelly Von Ruden had submitted her.
Yeah, we have, you only have, that commission has five alternate positions, and you only have one alternate right now, right?
Correct.
Two alternates.
Two alternates, so there's actually three.
One of those alternates' terms expire, and we haven't received a volunteer application.
Right. So there are plenty of open positions. I mean, if we end up with one or two new volunteers, there are still more than enough open positions.
So the question that Sue, you had posed was, you know, should this board be either accepting their resignation or not, and if we are accepting their resignation, obviously sending a letter thanking them for their, for their service if they did indeed resign, which is what, which what we customarily do.
Right. I don't read the word resignation in any of these, but I think it's just a response to not being reappointed.
They're still technically, in my opinion, until they resign, they are still technically members of these, of these committees until someone is appointed in their place. Now, I'm, I'm reading through this saying, that's thank you, but no thank you. If you're not going to appoint me, then I don't wanna serve. That's what I'm, that's kind of what I'm gathering here, but it's not, it's not officially a resignation. That's, I'm just.
Right.
Right. It's still, it's still in a state of flux, if I may. And I think we're still in a state of flux, because we don't have, we don't, we haven't closed out our, our time period, so.
Nick? Well, I guess, I mean, and maybe just for the discussion of this board, putting all of these other things aside, because we haven't really discussed as a board, what is it that we're looking to accomplish? In other words, I know you had mentioned, being the only person that I've heard from, balance. So does that mean we're looking to get non-conservation-minded people to balance out the conservation-minded people? We, what type of balance? People that are looking for development versus conservation?
Personally, I, I would like to see somebody who may be somebody who is a developer on that commission, to know that when you, um, see, and I, when you referred back to, um, their charge, I can make a great argument that if I look at that charge, that they have overstepped and overreached their charge as a committee or a commission. But that being said, I, I think you get a good outcome when you're someone who's making recommendations, and you have somebody who is a business owner, or somebody who is a developer, or owns an excavation company, or has a different mindset as a businessman, to say, wow. That's, that, that's a, you know, to temper the thought process. Um, and going back to this whole notion of, you know, the experience, we, we put people on committees and commissions, and we vote people into elected office, budget committee, that deal with the financial affairs of this town, and they may have no accounting background, they may have no financial background whatsoever, but yet they're responsible, responsible for preparing fifty million dollar budgets, school and town combined. But yet, when it comes to a wetland or a natural resource, you know, we must have that, you know, level of expertise. I, I do think it's very important, but I also think that I would, I would hope that others could, you know, you can learn some of that as well.
Oh, I understand, and please, don't misunderstand me. I wasn't saying that that was the only way. What I was saying is historically, because of the technical nature of the Conservation Commission, this has been the way it had worked. Openings, new people were appointed to a alternate position, they gained experience, and then as a voting member dropped off, the commission recommended an alternate member to fill in. This board ultimately made those decisions, but typically in the past, this board acquiesced to their recommendations. And so the, the question that was raised, will that still continue?
And I will say that this member just did not acquiesce to other commissions' recommendations, 'cause I have departed from that past practice, uh, in the past. So, you know, I personally wanna see, you know, who else is interested. I, I don't view these things as lifetime appointments. I don't, and I think that the process, the way that exists right now, if you've served on the committee, there's almost, you know, you will, you will get reappointed by your own committee, year after year after year. I've seen it, I've seen it with Parks and Rec, and I've seen it with Conservation and others. Um, and there is a need to, um, you know, change the dynamic. And I'll say this, we have a, a little bit of a different dynamic on EDC, which I think is a good thing. It was stagnant for a while. There was members who didn't show up, and now we've got two new members on EDC, which is changing the dynamic. It's a good thing. Different mindset, and there's nothing wrong with saying, hey, you know what, we wanna, we wanna see a different mindset, and, um, that's, that's my, that's my take on it, and, um, again, it's no disrespect to the, the two individuals. I know they've served for a long time. I know they're, um, they're nice people. But I, like I said, I'd like to see a changed dynamic. You know, we talk about, um, you know, wanting to go, the town, to go in, in a, in a direction where we're viewed, the perception is that we're, we wanna be, uh, friendly to, uh, development or business, um, and sometimes you have to, you know, change things up. Um, look at our planning board. The voters put two new planning board members in, I want, you know, they're, they, they obviously wanted to see a change. So, that's my opinion.
What, what I'm hearing from this, well, there's a couple of things that I wanted to add to this. First of all, I think if we look at the statute to see what's the requirement to serve, one thing. I don't see anything in the statute that says, lists any type of requirement to serve.
No, of course not, no.
Ri- right. And I guess I'll just give a little bit of history as to how we got to the point where the committee is making a recommendation to the appointing board of who they feel should be appointed. Before that happened, after elections, each selectman would come in with a name of people to go onto boards. The selectmen would have a discussion among themselves. I mean, back then, it used to be three selectmen, so if you had a committee, and you had three openings, each selectman got to pick one, one person. And that's how it was done. There was no volunteer application, there was no form like that. Selectmen would come in and say, uh, so-and-so gave me a call this week, and they're interested on sitting on this, uh, uh, committee, and we have an opening, and he might make a motion, and it might pass, it might fail. That's how it was done. Then we got to the point where we had, at one time, we tried to look of how to put a process together so that it just didn't become, well, here we are, we had a meeting, we wasn't on the agenda, and you come up with a name to, to put on a committee. So we came up with, uh, application. Then there was a big discussion as to what the qualifications of a person. Well, the qualifications of a person, number one, is that you're a resident of town. You have to be a certain age, probably, okay? And whatever is in the statute that is a requirement for you to serve on a particular board. So at one time, it was a request that you, you know, we wanna see what the person's qualification, then another time, that, that discussion came up, well, why? All you have to do is be a citizen to serve. So this has gone through, gone, gone through a process, and I think what I'm hearing, okay, and what I've seen in this change, in this, is that now you have, uh, committees that are making a recommendation of who they want on the committee to the body that's appointing them. And what I'm hearing, or I think I'm hearing, is that there's a concern that some people may not want to get onto or put their name in for a committee because of a, perhaps a mindset or of a particular committee that a person may not necessarily particularly agree with. And if they go to that committee, that, that committee may or may not, may not recommend them to the board. Uh, this is what.
Oh, yeah. I mean, I, I'll give you a classic example. Um, we had, there was a resignation on the budget committee last year. We had a very fiscally conservative budget committee. You had two individuals who expressed interest. The board appointed a fiscally conservative person to fill the vacancy. My, my point now would.
But they're an elected body.
No, I, I under, I understand that, um, but one of, when you talked before about, you know, what a selectman does, one of the roles of a selectman is to appoint people to committees. We are considered an executive, all right? We are much like an executive, like, as in a governor or any other person that appoints people. And one of the things of, of winning an election is that you get to appoint people that align more with your philosophies and approaches on things, or, okay? So if my philosophy and approach is about balance, whether you like it or you don't like it, I have one vote out of five, and I get to pick who I want to be on it. And if I don't agree with the two people that are, have been longstanding members about their philosophy as opposed to my philosophy on this particular commission, I can say that I'm, I don't feel comfortable reappointing. That's, now, that's not to say that I wouldn't appoint them to another committee, because I think they're hardworking, and I do align with their, their, their philosophy, but, you know, when I won as, as an elected official, that gave me the right, and by law, to appoint someone for any reason that I deem fit, um, and that's what, that's what I'm exercising. There are people that I'm very, very close with. I would not appoint them to the Conservation Commission, because I don't agree with them philosophically on certain things. I think they take things to, to an extreme, all right? I'm looking for a more moderate view on, 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 on things. And I don't think that they are moderate on that particular issue. I'm talking about people who I'm very close with. That's not to say that I wouldn't want them on a Parks and Rec commission or an HDC, because my views and their views more closely align. But that's my prerogative. I can't speak for the other, for, for you and the other three, but that's my, that's my approach to it. So, um, that's nothing to say about the, how nice these people are, because they're both nice people, they both know what they're doing. But if I have a certain mindset, and they have another mindset, and we don't jive, then why do I wanna reappoint them? I just don't get that. Yeah.
And, and I, I wholeheartedly agree. Where I, I differ in opinion with you is when it's done in a hit or miss fashion. And by that, I mean, if, if that's the position we're going to take, then I would hope when the Highway Safety Committee members come up, that we would not appoint them yet, and make sure that everyone in the volunteers' positions are posted. And when HDC members. And when HDC members come up, I would hope that we hold off on just taking the recommendation of that committee. And wait until we have volunteers, but it just becomes suspect when it's. We wanna change because we don't like this, so now we're not going to appoint those members. But everybody else gets rubber stamped when that recommendation comes before us.
And I'm just gonna make it clear for me and me only is that I had the same issues with Parks and Recreation where it was a longstanding member. A very good person, but I wanted to see a change in the philosophy there, so I did not appoint that person, okay? Nothing against that person as an individual, it was a great person, but I wanted to see a different, different change. So, in terms of consistency, I personally remain true to that, um, over the last couple of years. Um, and that's how I look at the appointment process. I do not look at it as a rubber stamp of, yep, I'm gonna vote on every single thing that a committee or a commission does. And there, and quite honestly, there are people who are current members of current commissions that I don't feel too good about. And then when it comes time, I'm probably not gonna reappoint some of them, if I'm, you know, if I'm still on this board, so. Um, and that's simply because I don't think that they've either done what they said they were gonna do, and, or they're not as active as I'd like them to be. For a whole scope, for a whole myriad of reasons, but, um, I just don't think of this as a rubber stamp. And I, I also, I do not like the process of the group think. It's like, if there's an opening on a committee or commission, I know, I've seen how the process works. It's like, oh, so-and-so stepping down, can we get somebody else, or let's talk about them, because it's, they, because they all think the same way. Um, they're all, it's, it's group think, and rarely does somebody say, hey, let's bring somebody else in this commission who has this perspective. They, they think differently than we do, but we'll, we'll have a better outcome. I have never heard that. It's always been, you know, who aligns with how we wanna approach these things as a group. It's more consensus as opposed to balance and have different opinions. And, and I've said this to others, and I'll say it again, when I have to set up a committee at work. I want someone with a lot of different skillsets, cause I get a great outcome that way. When I get somebody, they all, everybody thinks the same way, I already know where we're going. And that's what I feel we have here, and I think that's what we had on Parks and Rec. I, I tell you, I have seen, I've been to these Parks and Rec, you, you have, they, they challenge each other like crazy on this Parks and Rec commission right now. I don't see that type of level of challenge on, on, on the Conservation Commission, I just don't.
Part of Parks and Rec is that the, this board did make those changes overall. I mean, that, that takes, that takes a majority vote. And, you know, I, I don't know exactly, you know, which one of us did. I know I, I had voted the same way within the Parks and Rec to make those changes, and since then, you're. I, 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 it didn't change all, you know, we didn't change a lot of people, but it changed that the dynamics of how, how it looks and, and how people act, and there has been a difference. And, and like I say, this board, this board voted as a majority to do that.
What I would ask though, when we did vote those changes for Parks and Rec. We provided them with guidance, because we clearly articulated where we wanted Parks and Rec to go, and what direction. I think we owe it to the Conservation Commission to do the same thing. And when they request to have a meeting with us, and do meet with us, I would hope that we would speak in more specific terms than balance. Or specifically, what are the directions that we are looking for, or specifically, what are the things that have happened in the past?
I'll give you, I'll give you one specific example that, that, this whole issue with Briarwood Estates, okay? We somehow get roped into that thing on the planning board side, and when we're having our discussions. Um, we walk the property, we see it's a great piece of property for people, for citizens to use, and if we're gonna accept this as a town. Then we wanted to create some parking, maybe a warming hut, people can go cross-country skiing. And when we talk about that, all of a sudden, it was, no, it's just simply gonna be a forest. People, you know, and, and we, we really don't even want that many cars there, maybe two or three, okay? So, when I'm talking about balance, balance for me is, yeah, have a parking lot for ten or fifteen cars so that people can go there and, you know. Young families can walk around and, and take advantage of it, or we had went to the extreme of maybe a Boy Scout or a Girl Scout troop could camp there, and which we learned is not permissible. But, um, where people could cross-country ski, but no, the balance was, nope, it will be for the enjoyment of the birds, okay? And it really wasn't gonna be for the enjoyment of the people, so why would the town wanna have it? And we got a lot of resistance. That took a six-month process, all right? Because people were steadfast. David Neiman came in here and he was steadfast in his approach, okay? There was no compromise there. So, as far as I'm concerned, I'm looking for a moderate conservation commission. One that says, you know what, we've gotta really stick steadfast, we gotta preserve X, Y, and Z, but you know what? This is not all that important and I can see this, so let's, 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 uh, let's acquiesce on this one. I don't see that right now, and that, and that Briarwood is a prime example of it. Uh, that took six months. And if that took six months for, for our boards, because we're the ones who appoint them. Then what is it like for somebody who has to go and spend tens of thousands of dollars to get civil engineering, wetland scientists, you know. Aquatic this and, and habitat, you know, uh, natural habitat folks, and then go through that year sausage maker? I'm sorry, that's why I did it.
But if I may, just to correct you, and those requirements are planning board level requirements. Even if you had no Conservation Commission, they would still be going through that.
Well, let, let me, let me just follow up on what Scott. I think where Scott's coming from is, I sat at the planning board, and the planning board was told. That we need the PLC to have the conservation easement on this property because the Conservation Commission does not have. And I, you'd have to look in the minutes to see exactly what the words, what it was. The Conservation Commission doesn't have the, it's either the time, the resources, the ability to manage the property. So PLC needs to do it to manage the property. When we went through that process, what did we find out? They don't manage the property, okay? As a matter of fact, we could wind up in a very position where they're suing us. Okay? Completely different issue. I think another thing that Scott's talking about is when we were here, and he sat here in his chair. And he was told that he was unethical for putting Scott Bartlett's information on the town website. I think that's where Scott's coming from. I don't, I'm not trying to put words in his mouth.
And I understand that, but, and I guess that's where I'm going, that I would hope if those are the issues that have raised their heads. That are putting us in this mindset that we want change, we would articulate that to the Conservation Commission. That, that's all I'm saying. I think you cannot change a body unless, or not change, but at least let them know. What direction we would like them to go in, if you don't tell them. I mean, I, I, they were, I brought that issue up with our, um. Scott Bartlett the other night at the Conservation Commission, you know, there was an issue there between our board and their board, and their commission. Um, I can remember the mill foil, um, where we approached them. I would have preferred a commission that said, well, maybe the RSA doesn't allow us to do this, but this is how we can. Change or work towards so that we could accommodate requests like that, but if, instead, we gotta, no, absolutely not. But I think those are the things we need to articulate if we are going to affect change. Uh, because I don't know how many years it's gonna take us to change every member on the Conservation Commission. And if you, if you don't work with them and you create an adversarial relationship. You may get a new volunteer, you may not, but I don't know how you're gonna change that mindset. I think you're just gonna reinforce it going forward. We need to work with the commission and try to come to some meeting of the minds versus.
Well, I just want you to also be aware, okay, that at the planning board. The planning board was told that the Board of Selectmen left the Conservation Commission out of the discussion with the PLC on this Briarwood project, okay? And I specifically asked the planning board, when the motion was made, for the Board of Selectmen to work with the town. To come up with the easement terms, or, or the, uh, to come up with terms acceptable to the town. I, I sat there and I specifically asked the chairman, what the term, what he meant by town. And he said, the Board of Selectmen, and I said, so the Board of Selectmen, terms acceptable to the Board of Selectmen? He said, yeah. And that's exactly what this board did, and we were accused of leaving them out.
I'm not denying any of that, I'm just, but I think that's the, the, the conversation we need to have with them.
And here's another thing too, is that, I'm, I'm, so you can go.
Go ahead, Dave.
I, I'll bring up a specific event. About a year ago, a significant parcel in this town.
Robert's, Robert's Farm.
Could be developed with, what, several dozen new houses on it, and, uh, the commission. Felt that the amount of property taxes that a house would bring in annually. Would not pay for the, the services that the town would provide to the homeowner. And this board felt that that argument was wrong, and we heard, uh. Information presented by the assessor that showed that that was a, a wrong conclusion. And we promoted that assessor's recommendation to be posted on the website. But still, I, I believe, I, in a future meeting, I heard the commission still talk about. Their, their same position that the average house would not bring in the taxes to pay for the services.
You know, communication's a two-way street, and, um, I also believe that. I have never been happy, up until recently, where we started to get some non-public dialogue, which we asked for. But we've got folks who are negotiating land easements and land purchases on our Conservation Commission. Which, by the way, if you read the statute, they have absolutely no authority to do so unless we grant that to them. They were doing it on their own, okay? Up until about three months ago, it was the first time that I can recall that we got briefed kind of beforehand. So, that's another issue that, that I have. Um, last time I checked, if you look for open space meeting minute notes, you probably might, you might not find any. Um, so negotiating on behalf of the town, that's not such a good thing. Um, I was also not very pleased when we were promoting that Barnard land purchase. We made it very, very clear. Um, that's what we were doing. We asked other, we, we specifically asked, folks, this is not the year. This is an important thing for the board, and guess what? Last month, all of a sudden, we've got the Roberts Farm that's up for, uh, sale. Uh, or an easement, I should say, and, um, when we went to the deliberative session. The folks from the Conservation Commission actively tried to change the vote and try to get Barnard defeated and theirs through. That's not exactly a partnership either, so, you know, we're talking about, we talk about the mill foil, we talk about, so there's like a history here. Um, in my opinion, and then there's not to mention the fact that there are members of the Conservation Commission. Who like to go and stick it to a few local businesses in town and make their lives miserable. Um, by, uh, filing stuff with DES, and then it goes to DES, and guess what? They get exonerated. But after spending tens of thousands of dollars in costs, so, um, now is that in their purview for the statute? I don't think so, so, in my opinion, there are some good people on Conservation, no doubt about it. But there are also a few that totally overstep their, um, their bounds in terms of this chapter and this RSA. And that mill foil thing, yeah, that did tick me off, because their job is to preserve watershed resources and, and, and unofficial bodies of, you know, et cetera. When we asked for that, there was no cooperation there. It was like, no, we wanna buy land, okay? I'm sorry. Another thing is philosophically, I know it's a planning board thing, I do not believe in these hundred-foot setbacks for, for, um. For, uh, for, for, um, you know, uh, streams and, you know, surface water, I philosophically don't believe it. And I know that the Conservation Commission did not, um, um, they're not the ones officially, that was the planning board. But they were also very instrumental, but I don't believe in it, because just like you said tonight, that gentleman who wanted to put up a shed. I guarantee you, he had to pay a, at least a few hundred dollars to have somebody, that's a cost. And it also limits somebody's ability to develop their own land, which they paid a lot of money for. Um, so, those are, those are some of the reasons, and, um, again, that's not to take away from these individuals or any individual who serves. But if I have a philosophical difference of opinion, then why do I wanna keep on reappointing people that I have a diff, you know. You know, I have a difference of opinion with on that particular issue. On ninety percent of other issues, I may agree with them, but on this one, I disagree with them. Yeah.
Again, I, I don't, I'm not intending to, oh, I'm sorry.
I guess we're thinking, I guess this we're going, I mean, I don't wanna say going around, but, but going back to the Roberts Farm, I mean, that was a perfect example also where. It did come back a little bit and we tried to compromise. In fact, it was actually you who brought the best compromise back, saying, why don't you put that money forward? And then we can, maybe it'll be a lesser amount, and I, and I remember sitting there with you saying, geez, not a good idea to have two land purchasers going forward. But when you brought that up, I said, you know what, that's, and I think the board as a group said, okay, why don't we try and go that way? And it was a good idea, and, and you didn't see that flexibility, in fact. It wasn't, and, and sometimes it wasn't the idea that, that no one wanted to compromise on it, it was just in the manner that it was rejected back. It, it, it wasn't, uh, it wasn't, it, it was no spirit of, of cooperating. I had gone down one time to a meeting with, with, with Scott Bartlett, and also he monitors all the land, the, um, the land, the land use change money. And we were having that, that difficult year, and we're still having difficult years regarding, that he was looking for a flyover for other hotels. And he went down there just to, just to plead his case, saying, hey, do you think you could help out with this, you know, this year to get the flyer? Because that, he's the one that monitors that, and those, and that's what he needed. And it wasn't, it, it, it was a terrible night. I felt bad when Scott left, and it's not because it was a no, it was about, it, 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 it was how it transpired. And so, I have, you know, so when you look at the last several years and how it's gone, it's that, it's, it's not so much the, you know. Honestly, there's those decisions that are made, but it's the spirit and how it was done also, I, I'll, I'll say for myself.
And last, but, and that, you just refreshed my memory. I don't think we had the open dialogue on that particular issue, um, and again, I voted, by the way, in support of the Conservation on that one. I did not wanna see the money get diverted, and it's in, you can check the minutes. Um, I think I was the only one. But the board was four-one where they wanted to, um, take fifty percent of the money from current use change tax.
Twenty-five percent.
Twenty-five percent, okay? Um, and it, that's what went to deliberative session. I don't recall any conversation from someone coming and saying, hey, by the way, I just wanna let you know, we respect your decision, but. We're gonna have people come in and we're gonna try to change that deliberative session, which they were successful in doing. So, again, just difference of opinion, but it doesn't set a warm fuzzy. So now, for me, and I'm not speaking for anybody else, because frankly, um, no, nobody here had any, had any pre-conversations, that's why it was so damn awkward. But I'm looking at it saying, I, I wanna see a, a change here, and how do you see a change? And among greater balance, when you just keep on reappointing the same people year after year? I'm just, it's a recipe for the sameness. And that's why I didn't second it, because I, I wasn't gonna vote for somebody that, why, why second something for discussion if you're not gonna vote for them? That doesn't, doesn't make any sense to me.
So?
I just, I just wanna say, I heard the mill foil and I heard the flyover discussion. Both of those items, they said no because the way their fund was set up was for land purchases only. I believe there was a follow-up question, would you consider a warrant article to expand?
Right, correct.
The use of your fund to include other natural resource management. Um, and I believe the answer to that was, no, we really wanted it for.
Land purchases and easements.
Land purchases. And I don't know if that was to the, that question was presented to the full commission or to individual members, I'm not sure.
If I may, just, just to, I, I, I think I would have preferred, and I'm gonna speak for myself, and I'm, I would not try to. Change your feelings, because you, everything that you've articulated, I understand, and it's well within our right. I think it would have worked to a much better end if we had at some point brought the Conservation Commission in. Explained what our feelings were, and basically said, we don't want this adversarial relationship. It needs to change, and if it doesn't change, then we'll make it change. But at least everyone then would have known what our feelings are, and, and we are where we are. Um, I would just hope that when they do come before us, that we provide them the same feedback that we just talked about tonight.
Well, let me just ask you a question. When and where were we to have this discussion prior to?
At any one of our, I mean, we could have had it right at, once those volunteer applications came before us, we could have said when...
Time out, time. I'm, I, I've said this to three or four people. When that night came for those volunteer applications, I thought that I was gonna be the only one, like I was for Parks and Rec.
Understood, understood.
So when I, I got my head down saying, I'm not gonna support these two people for the reasons that I just stated, I had no clue where everybody else was going on this.
Understood, I recognize that.
And, and I think that was why it was so damn awkward was because others probably maybe thought they were thinking the same thing and that's what happened. So when someone says, why do you, why didn't you have the dialogue? I didn't approach anybody or bring it up because I never talked to anybody about it. I thought I was gonna be the lone person, you know, expressing my individual vote and that's why I never came up.
Understood.
Now, subsequent to that, I would agree with you.
Two weeks ago, two weeks after that, I brought it up again and someone could have said, well, you know, let's hold off because before we wanna nominate people, we need to have a discussion with conservation and lay it on the line and say, listen, this is what we're, what's bothering us. We'll ask you, do you think you can?
But I came back from a trip from Florida, didn't, I just got my packet and I see in there that it was gonna be a non-public discussion about how we're gonna proceed with this thing. Um, and I think that was probably gonna be the time when we were gonna do it. That was the impression that I got because I was late to getting here. Then, you know, Kimberly was here and says, I see that you're gonna be talking about it in non-public. As far as I'm concerned, you can talk about it in public. And I'm thinking, hmm, that's nice, because I'm not prepared to talk about it in public. I wanna talk to you about it in non-public. So that threw me off, you know, off guard, me personally, I can't speak for anybody else. And, and since that time, you know, you know, I feel comfortable explaining. I think I did, I did to the media, I've done to, to people who've, who've asked me why I have my position. And it is what it is. Do I, do I wish that the process would have been different? I surely do, because regardless of my feelings and my opinions on conservation and the job that they're doing, these two people have spent a lot of time volunteering in our community. They deserve better. They definitely deserve better than the process that unfolded here. But I can't take that back. I apologize for it, but I can't take it back. Um, and if we wanna have that discussion with them, great. Do I think it still should be in a non-public session? I still, I still do, because no matter how it comes out, other people's names get, I've, I've been around this thing long enough to know that other people's names come up and it, it could damage their reputation. So even though Kimberly felt comfortable about us talking about her publicly, um, I felt that it was better and more professional to do it in a non-public session so that other names don't get, don't get brought into the, which I'm telling you, it happens, it's natural. So that's my take.
Well, just, just, not to cut you off, but I just want, so that everybody's clear with our understanding here, okay? And even for the public, because when you take what Scott said about the non-public, okay? I'm the chair and I follow the agenda. And on the agenda was non-public listed for reputation that, uh, what may affect the reputation of a person other than the board. And that scheduling, from what my understanding on there was with CARP for an issue. It was not for Conservation Commission or any member of the Conservation Commission. It was on that agenda to have that discussion with CARP. So I came here and opened this meeting and ran this meeting intending for that to be the only issue. I was surprised when I was told by a member here that she understands we're going to a non-public discussion to discuss her. I'm looking around, the only thing I saw anyplace in the packet was something where Sue had a question about how we, how we proceed. I don't know the conversation that you have, what hap, I, I don't know.
I just told her I wanted to go non-public to get direction from board and how they wanted to proceed.
Okay, but you had that discussion with her, you did not have that discussion with me. So I'm here running this meeting, looking at this agenda, RSA, non-public, going to non-public to have a discussion with CARP, which was here, which we did, okay? And you know, quite frankly, there was a motion that was brought up to appoint these two people, okay? There was no said, well, you know, we have these two, do you wanna proceed? The motion was made, I'm looking for a second. There's no second.
And I think that, I think that was the reason why, had it been, had it been known that there was three or four people that were not gonna support the nomination, then clearly there would have been a dialogue. But I, I think, I mean, I, I'm only speaking for myself, I didn't know that at that time. I knew it after the vote, obviously, it was, it was so awkward, but, um, and like I said before, um, I think the process in retrospect was horrid. I mean, I wish it, wish the, I wish it was different. It would, it's still not changing my opinion. But unfortunately, um, I, I have a difference of opinion as to the, the, the manner in which or the philosophies of these individuals. That doesn't, that doesn't diminish their tremendous contribution, you know, to the town and what they do and, and their intellect and they're, they're good people. Um, but then again, there are many Supreme Court justices that are great people who get nominated, Nick, but the president doesn't nominate them or a governor doesn't nominate somebody to be, you know, uh, you know, a commissioner of, of revenue or something like that. A lot of good people, but they just don't get renominated or reappointed. So it's not, I hope that, um, again, I, I know it's difficult to try to separate the, the, the professional versus the, the non-professional, just, I'm, I'm sure, I know one, I know Kimberly much more than I know Evelyn and Kimberly's a great lady. Um, it's nothing to do with that, it's just more in terms of on this particular issue, where do I, where do I align, where does she align and we just, we're far apart. Um, but on other issues, we're not, we're, we're close together on it. So that's, I wish the process would have been different because they did serve our community or they still do. I don't, I can't tell from what, what's going on here, but, um, but it's not gonna detract from what, how I feel it right now.
So they have submitted a request to be on the agenda for May sixteenth?
They have.
Thank you. Any further discussion, um?
Just a question about the process of the, the alternates and the full, like, full members of the commission. Could we elevate an alternate to a full member? Or is that only based on the recommendation of their committee?
No, we can do it as long as the person's willing to do it.
Thank you.
So who is an alternate right now?
Someone mentioned two names, you, you, I mean, you've mentioned two?
There, there are two alternates, one's term expired, um, and he has not submitted a application.
So there's only one alternate then currently serving as an alternate. Thank you.
Okay.
All right. Here, the planning board.
Yeah. Planning board did meet, uh, there were two action, I, one was an extension for the Bournable subdivision. That's the one on the corner of one fourteen and one fourteen A. And the other, um, that was a time extension. And the other one was the, uh, what you had mentioned about the shed in the, uh, in the wetlands, um, in the outer fifty-foot setback, that one, uh, was approved. And I believe that was, yeah, that was it outside of them appointing the CIP committee members. Any questions? And Sue, do you have any, any non-public?
There's one item in there for signature. Is there any discussion?
An update on, we talked about a non-public last week.
Oh, we do, yes. We do have an update on that.
Okay. We go into that then, that would be, uh...
A?
A.
If I could just ask a question on the, uh, are there, are there any changes to the collective bargaining?
I think this is the first one you've seen, the total package. You had updates along the way, economic factors, that was about it.
Question on process?
Yeah.
Were these, or weren't these already tentatively approved, gone to town? So there's no discussion changing?
This is the signature draft.
I guess my question is, there's, there's nothing that has changed?
There's no economic changes.
Okay.
All right. Um, yeah, but that's not non-public.
Right.
You have another issue for non-public?
Yes, last week's.
Okay.
All right. So we'll need a motion for that.
Yeah, A, A is personal, right? Yes?
Okay, but that basically does conclude our public business, right?
Yes.
So we be in non-public and then we'll be adjourning from there, okay? So we'll need a motion for non-public.
So moved.
For which one?
A.
A.
Ninety-one A, three paragraph, two A.
Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, all of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Roll call?
Yes.
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 We are a non-public session, thank you.